Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. And immediately thereafter, the committee of the whole meeting. Tonight's city council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowery?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilberg?
Here.
Kastarag?
Here.
Maliki?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and I would like to invite my friend Nick to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you do us the honor? Awesome. We'll follow your lead. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all good. Thank you, sir. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen tuning in, others joining us here in the chamber, we have some very special guests with us this evening. It's my high honor to introduce to you Geneva High School Foreign Exchange students. I don't know if there's a representative of AFS who wants to speak first? Of course, why not? Come on up to the podium. Look how they nominated you. Forgive us for the interruption, Ms. Lang, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I'm Robin Lang. I'm the hosting coordinator for AFS Intercultural Programs for Greater Illinois, which incorporates like everything from Springfield to Wisconsin and over to Iowa. So we host students. And Geneva is fortunate enough to have four this year. All of them are on government-sponsored programs through the Department of State. So you are very fortunate to have them with you here, and I'm sure you'll hear more from them. But I am the hosting coordinator. I've been involved for over forty years. And my volunteer role is to help talk to families and figure out who's gonna host next year. So I put some brochures on your table spots. And I'll have you know, we don't have anyone yet has signed up to host for Geneva next year. And Geneva usually has quite a few students. So spread the word to your neighbors and friends about hosting. It's a wonderful opportunity. We also send students. So if you have some students who would enjoy traveling abroad on an exchange, please encourage them to apply. They just need to be fifteen to eighteen. And we also have exciting opportunities for teachers. So keep that in mind, too. There's a AFS Youth Assembly in New York in August, and they're looking for nominations of young teachers who like to incorporate world learning in their lesson plan, even if it's singing a song from another country, or playing an instrument from another country, or social studies, languages, any kind of teacher. They are looking for nominations. So that's about all I can say, I think.
I see in the small print it says audiovisual working order.
On that? I'm sure it does.
I'm sure it does, yes.
Okay, so there's what we know about AFS. And I have, oh, I should tell you one more thing. AFS has had a relationship with Geneva for like seventy-five years. We've had exchange students in the schools here. At home, I have a whole list of them. There hasn't been a single year, I don't think, when we haven't had at least one. So it's very, very longstanding relationship with Geneva that we are grateful for.
And the number of students differ just based on household sponsorships or based on availability from participating countries?
It's usually, the biggest challenge is finding host families. And sometimes it's the school. Certain school districts limit the number of students they'll accept. But Geneva doesn't. So, I mean, they say we like four, five, six, but if we find another one, they've never turned us down to find, to get a student in the school. So they're very welcoming. So that's awesome. We thank you for that a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now we have the pleasure of meeting the students.
Yes, there you go.
Very exciting. Any objection if I invite, or do you want to say something? Or I thought you guys were whispering as to perhaps you want to offer some comments as well? Oh, of course. Cynthia Albright? How long do you have that microphone batteries about there?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Burns, City Council. I think many of you already have had the opportunity to chat with some of the AFS students who are here. I represent the ICEC, the International Cultural Exchange Committee here in Geneva. And in addition to our projects and putting together delegations to visit Kwasis or Sen, our partner city, and they visiting here last fall, for example, we try to extend ourselves to our local community as well. And this is one of the ways. But in addition, we facilitate the discussions monthly at the Geneva Library, the Foreign Film Sundays. Every summer, there are French high school students who spend three weeks in the area. And we've put together a program, a rather rigorous program, for a full afternoon of Get to Know Geneva. And this is another way that we try to get our community involved. Several of our board members, in fact, I think all our board is here this evening. Show of hands. Jim Alderfer, Pam Kabine, Mary Jane Johnson, Julie Goodyear, and Donal Duval is back there as well. So Mary Jane and Pam worked in conjunction with Ben McCready to put together this program this evening. So they will present to you the four international students, the AFS students. Most of them have spent this past academic year here in Geneva with the host family, learning about our culture, and sharing theirs as well, and going back home with ideas. And I know you're going to find them very adventuresome, entertaining, and talented young people. So let me present, please, Mary Jane Johnson, who will introduce these students.
Hi, Mary Jane.
Hello. Thank you. I'm pleased to introduce these students. They are fantastic kids. So thank you for letting us be here tonight.
Of course.
The first one is Midyan Hasaniya. Want to just have a stand there, and then I'll have them all come up and then you can question them.
That'd be great.
Okay, and Midyan is from Lebanon.
That's right.
Next, we have Khan Kalak, who is from Turkey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Next is Nadee Gondana, and she is from Mozambique, with her beautiful hair. And lastly, Ahmed Ban, and he is from Indonesia. They're all yours.
Fantastic. So which order should we go in, council? What do you think? Alphabetical? Time out. Last name or first name? Last name? Bayem, you're up. Come to the podium. You and I met earlier, and you prefer, you go by Bayem?
Yep, you're right.
Which is your last name?
That's my last name.
But you go by Bayem?
You're right, yeah.
Is that cultural, or is that just what you prefer?
That's not my family name, so...
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I don't have a family name.
Now, you and I were talking earlier.
Yeah.
You graduate this year.
You're right, yeah.
And you're gonna go study IT.
You're right, yep.
What is IT?
Technology.
Oh, I see. Are you a big AI guy?
Yeah, kinda.
Kind of? That was Dean Kilberg, by the way. I understand that you are now a tennis player.
You're right, I am.
And you've never played tennis before?
Mm-hmm.
And you're playing for the Vikings?
You're right.
How goes it?
It's good.
Yeah?
I have, I had two games. I just won one and lost the other game.
Oh, congratulations. That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Wow. When's your next meet or match?
It's on Tuesday.
Tuesday, as in tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Is it home?
It's home, yeah.
So if we come out and cheer you on, that's okay?
That's fine.
Yeah?
If you win, yeah.
Well, that's cool. Do you have family?
Yep, I do. There's my host family here in the second row.
Welcome. What about family at home?
Family at home, yeah. I have three siblings back home.
Are you the oldest?
No, I'm the third child of four.
Third of four?
Yeah.
So what are your brothers and sisters doing?
My brother just graduated like two years ago. My sister is still in college, and my younger sister in high school.
In high school?
Yeah.
So when you say college in Indonesia, I know in Germany they call it university.
Yeah.
Are there multiple different colleges you can choose from, or is there one that you want to go to?
Just one.
Just one?
Just like university.
Just like university? So that's where you're gonna study IT?
You're right, yep.
And then after that, you're gonna change the world? Ultimately, what do you want to do with your degree?
Maybe more likely programmer.
Programmer and tennis?
And tennis player, yeah.
Yeah, you still play tennis?
I hope so.
So what's the most fun you've had while living in Geneva?
I love the track in Geneva, just like by the river.
Yep.
I love run. I had like fundraiser on the last Saturday.
Oh, yeah, that was.
I've been training.
I saw that.
Yeah, I've been training like five weeks for that.
Was that the chicken run?
Yeah, chicken run, yeah. You're right, yeah.
That was held in downtown Batavia.
You're right, yeah.
That's good chicken, isn't it?
It is.
Where's that chicken from?
Atlas Chicken.
Atlas Chicken, very good.
Yeah.
That's Lawrence in the game.
Yeah.
That's good stuff.
It was fun.
What was your time?
Twenty-eight minutes.
Twenty-eight minutes?
Yep.
That's good living.
Yeah.
Forget tennis, man. Wow.
That was my first race.
That was your first race?
Yeah.
Twenty-eight minutes in a 5K?
Yeah.
Life is good. So what are you gonna do tonight after all this?
I'm not sure yet.
What's the host family say? Sleep. Sleep. We are delighted to have you here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see. I've gotta go alphabetical. Midyan, you're up. My friend from Lebanon. You and I chatted earlier.
That's right.
You're literally gonna graduate twice this year, aren't you?
Not this year. I mean, I'm gonna graduate this year.
Right.
I don't think I'm gonna see the ceremony, but I graduated. And I'm gonna continue my senior year in Lebanon, so...
Oh, you're gonna continue your senior year?
Uh-huh.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Everyone travels home on June 3rd, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I've been told.
Just show up at the airport and...
Yeah, just cross my fingers.
And you want to study medicine?
That's right.
Why medicine?
It has a moral side and good money, so, yeah.
Unless you practice medicine here, right? What kind of medicine do you know? A specialty yet, or just general medicine? Do you want to be a...
I still haven't like put the pieces together yet. And I'm still not sure on what kind of medicine, what sect I might wanna go to, I wanna specialize in. I just know I like the moral side.
Sure.
And the money.
You just keep dropping that money thing, don't you? Be a family at home?
Yeah, I do.
Brothers and sisters?
Brothers and, I mean, brothers and a sister.
Are you, where are you in that rank?
I'm the second oldest.
Second oldest?
Uh-huh.
So your oldest sister or brother?
Brother.
What's he up to these days?
He's a mechanical engineer.
Oh, wow.
He's studying engineering, I mean, but he's doing pretty good.
Yeah? And what school?
The Lebanese University.
Is that where you will go as well?
I don't think so. I think I wanna go to the American University in Beirut.
Oh, no kidding?
If I'm able to, yeah.
That's a storied history there.
Huh?
That's a really impressive place. A lot of history in the American University in Beirut.
Yeah.
Wow. And your host family is where? Here. Can we see him?
They're home.
Dramatic.
They're working.
That was pretty good. Scalpel, just turn around, look for... Did you drive their car here tonight?
I can legally drive here, sadly.
That was a trick question. Did you hear that, Parisi? So what do you do for fun, Midyan?
For fun, I do a bunch of things. I skate, I play basketball sometimes, music production.
When you say skate, you're talking skateboarding.
That's right.
So you spend a lot of time at the track, as it were, off of South Street?
Uh-huh, I do. I like that place.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. I think maybe I can use a little bit of variety, just throwing that out there, but it's pretty good.
We'll be sure to send you the memo when we update that.
Okay, thank you.
And you like to play basketball?
Yep.
Have you gone to all the basketball games here in Geneva?
I didn't go to a single one, actually.
You, what?
Yeah. I mean, I like to play basketball, I don't like to watch basketball.
Where do we go from here? Yeah, did you go to any football games?
Football, I love the football games.
The American football?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. That was a pretty good season, wasn't it?
It was, it was.
Did you go down to the state championship game?
No.
No?
I went to the, I mean, my favorite was the Batavia one, like against Batavia. First time in thirteen years, apparently, we did it.
Yeah, isn't that wild?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty exciting. Does Batavia have any AFS students as well?
Yes.
Do they?
We have, we have two this year.
Oh, good. Oh, nice. That's great. Those are the gentlemen that came here a few months ago when we hosted the exchange students.
We had this fall?
Yeah, it was this fall.
Or last year, wasn't it?
I have no idea, was it this?
It was a year ago.
Was it really?
Yes.
Time goes, flies by.
Stay out of this, Midyan. We're trying to figure out... So, now you said this earlier, so I'm gonna quiz you now.
Okay.
You love the food here.
That's right.
And you particularly love?
A lot of things, like, okay, so pizza, for pizza, deep dish.
Deep dish pizza?
Yeah, even though it's not good for you, but I like it.
Because you like all cheese?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just straight cheese, so, yeah. For fast food, like franchises, I like Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A, yeah. What kind of music do you listen to?
Hip-hop, R&B, that sort of thing.
That sort of thing?
Yeah, I like some jazz, too, sometimes.
Do you know hip-hop was founded in Geneva?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I read that somewhere.
Tell me where. So tonight, what do you got going on after this?
Probably gonna go study for my math quiz. I've been procrastinating it for like a week, but...
Who's your math teacher?
Ms. Delawski. She's a great teacher.
Is she a great teacher?
She is.
What level math are you in?
Pre-calc.
Pre-calc?
Mm-hmm, pre-calculus.
Thank you for saying the full word.
I thought you were confused.
Fair point. Fair point, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's enough of you, Midyan. Thank you very much. Okay. Nadee? Now, Nadee is a star because this weekend, the musical takes place at Geneva High School, and you have a singing role in that musical.
Yeah.
Isn't that exciting?
Yes, it is.
Are you nervous, or...
No, I had two solos in two concerts in choir, so...
Oh, fudge. You're just a natural. Wow. Are you a soprano?
Yeah, soprano one.
Soprano one, wow. And what's the name of your character in the musical?
I don't have like a specific role, but I am in the ensemble.
Fantastic. It's gonna be a sellout crowd, I think, too.
Yeah.
It's gonna be wonderful. And tonight, or this week is tech week, so you have to return after the council meeting, back to the high school.
Yes.
Because you're there until about nine o'clock, aren't you?
Yeah.
Wow. And you know all your lines?
Yes.
Are you an actress back home in Mozambique as well?
Not at all.
Not at all? So this is your first foray into acting and singing?
Yes, actually, when I was back home, my younger sister used to tell me that I'm a norful actress. So I kind of like smashing her face now, look. Who's the bad actress now?
That's awesome. And you are also a senior, technically a senior.
Mm-hmm.
When you return to Mozambique, do you have more schooling to do there prior to university, or...
I don't know, because I was doing science with biology, which has math, physics, chemistry, and biology has main subjects. But here, I'm only taking math, physics, and chemistry. So hopefully, it will be enough, hopefully.
Hopefully is right. But you could sing your way through the finals, probably, couldn't you? Do you have family at home?
Yes, I do.
Brothers and sisters?
Two brothers and a sister.
Everyone has so far four kids. Are you the oldest or youngest?
The second.
The second oldest?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. And your host family is where tonight?
My host dad is there.
Are you alone like Midyan?
No.
What's your favorite part of living in Geneva?
The people, I would say. They're very kind. Everywhere I go, like, people are smiling and everything. I don't, I've never been to a situation where people are rude or anything like that, yeah.
You kind of wonder why everybody's smiling, right? It's because they're all going to see you perform this week. I just know it. So what do you want to do after high school and college?
I want to do petroleum engineering.
What kind of, I'm sorry?
Petroleum.
Petroleum engineering, really?
Yeah.
Why is that? Is there, is there family involved in that industry as well?
Kind of. My father, he's a geologist, so he works with mineral chalk. And I really like chemistry, so, yeah, it's kind of a good, yeah.
Absolutely. Do you know the entire periodic table?
Yeah.
You do?
Not, I mean...
Can you remember?
I know half of the transition metals, but I can tell you the, all the alkaline earth, or all the alkaline, all the halogens, all the noble gases and everything.
What about, do you know the inert gases?
Sorry?
Do you know the inert gases? Yeah, I know that. That was a trick question.
You want me to go in order?
No, I do not. Is that part of your song on Obrang Night?
No.
How about you? What kind of music do you listen to?
I really like old songs.
Okay, you gotta define what that means. And don't say the early 2000s.
I like old Whitney Houston, Adele, and, yeah, just old singers, old songs in general.
Do you sing at home as well? Do you sing along with those artists?
No, at home, we all, I only sing at church.
Okay.
So here, I really love that I have the choir program at school.
Yeah, isn't that great?
Yeah.
That's really cool. We're delighted to have you in Geneva.
Thank you.
And we'll see you this weekend at the play. Remember, we're gonna bring signs.
I hope.
Yeah, and you're on TV. Remember, I told you that. Thank you very much, Nadee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Khan? How are you, sir?
Fine, thanks, how are you?
Well, and welcome.
Thank you.
How's life in Turkey?
I don't know, like, it's been eight months, so, yeah.
Are you keeping...
But it must be fine, yeah.
Are you keeping an eye on things?
Yes, I do, sometimes.
Yeah? What's the name of your hometown?
Istanbul.
Oh, in Istanbul?
Yeah, so it's like a really big city.
Nadee can sing the song.
Yeah, I can, actually.
Yeah, exactly. Constantinople. Can you sing that?
A song from Turkey?
No, no, there's like Istanbul, Constantinople.
Constantinople, yeah. No?
Maybe you can.
And Stephanie was just in Turkey, in Istanbul, yeah.
That's really cool.
We have a satellite city there.
Wow. What kind of satellite city?
No, we don't.
Oh, okay. That's what I guess, yeah.
And you're a senior as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Not really, but yes.
Okay, you gotta explain that, then.
So I'm a senior in Geneva High School.
Yes, sir.
But not in Turkey. So I'm a junior, actually, and I will be a senior when I go back. So I will be like a double senior.
Isn't that something?
It is something, yeah.
You sound excited about that.
Yeah, I am so excited. Yeah, I am, so excited.
Do you have family in Turkey?
Yes, I do.
Brothers and sisters?
No, only child.
Only child? No kidding? Wow.
Yeah, only child.
It's gotta be lonely back there without you around.
I have my cousins, like, yeah, but, you know, for my family, maybe, maybe, yeah.
And your host family?
They're in France right now.
Wait, wait. Your host family in Geneva is now in France?
Yes.
So you got the house to yourself?
No. So, uh, I have a, like, they're, they call it liaison, it means local coordinator, and I stay with her. Yeah, 'cause they're like in a short vocation.
Is your liaison here?
No.
She's in Paris.
No, she's...
That's cool, man. So, as you matriculate through college, after you have two senior years?
Yes.
What do you want to do professionally?
So, I love math and science, so probably I will be an engineer, like, I'm into computers and I like doing stuff with it, like, I can double up a lot, a lot of things, so that's what I want to do.
And you want to stay in Turkey?
Yes, like, there is a college test that I need to take back home, like, and my next year will be like a lot of studying for that.
And that's, and, and that test determines whether you are eligible for the university level? At any university?
So, no. We have like lots of universities in Turkey, and you take this test, and they rank you, so you can just get placed into universities if you do good at test. Like, for example, there are like 1.5 million students in Turkey that takes this test, and then like, if you are, for example, in the first thousand, then you will be like in a great school, but if you're like the last, it's that bad, like worst school ever. So...
I, I feel your pain.
I'm not the last, yeah.
No, not your, not you, of course.
Yeah.
And, and it's an all-day test, I assume?
No, it's just like, actually, it's two days, but, you know, in the morning, uh, just two hours per day.
Oh, is that right? And how quickly do you get the results?
Uh, one month.
You have to wait a month?
Yes.
Ugh.
Yeah.
Wow.
Sometimes it's a lot, but, you know, you get used to it.
So you're having a ball, you're having fun here in Geneva?
Yeah, a lot.
So far, what's the funnest thing you've done?
Like, this is the hardest question ever, like, uh, I mean, a lot, there are a lot of things. I would say, mm, in Geneva?
Or anywhere else in the area?
Um, I had a lot of fun in Chicago, like, I was in a Cubs game last Friday, and it was like, luckily, it was like the best match ever, I don't know.
That's when they came back to win it, or?
Yeah. And it was fun, yeah. I didn't understand like the most part of it, but it was still really good, yeah.
I don't think the Cubs in there still in the most part of it either.
Yeah, and I was like angry at some point because like, he's hitting, but he's not eating, like, he's just waiting, and it, probably it's like the strategy, but it was good, yeah.
Who, who'd you go to the game with?
Uh, so there is another Turkish exchange student in Chicago, and there is one more in Batavia, so we were three.
Oh, okay, yeah. Oh, no kidding? You have good seats?
Yeah, we found some seats.
Did he say he had manager council seats?
No.
Oh, I thought you said, because Craig Council's the manager, right? I thought, holy fudge pops, that's nice, that's good living, man. Wow.
Yeah.
So, uh, baseball's not your sport?
Probably, yes. Like, I didn't watch it for a long time, but I will guess, no, my, not my sport.
Do you have a particular favorite sport?
Yes, I love to watch soccer. Yeah, not, I can play too, but, you know, watch is always better, watching is always easier.
And of course FIFA's coming to the United States next year, pretty exciting, the World Cup and everything.
Yes, and, yeah, but in the United States soccer is, I don't like it. Sorry about that, but, you know...
You know, actually, uh, Mr. Marks played professional soccer.
In what team?
What team? What team, Rich?
Team Burns.
Team Burns.
So why don't you like, this is truly sincere, why don't you care for US soccer as much as perhaps European or?
So I believe there is like more spirit in, back in my home, because...
Oh, there's a lot of spirit.
Yeah. And here, people are watching, not cheering. And, but, you know, in high school games, I would have more fun, because people are actually cheering and then they care about it, like, yeah.
Interesting. My son-in-law played basketball in Turkey.
Oh, really?
He did, he loved it, great experience, beautiful country, Istanbul.
Thank you.
Beautiful country. There's a big picture of you in the middle of Istanbul.
A lot of pictures. Yeah.
Well played. Anything else you want to say before we ask you to leave?
Um, I don't think so.
No? Well, we are delighted to have you here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All students wanna come up, we're gonna take a quick photo here with the mayor.
Except for you, Midyan, nobody... Oh my God, isn't that great? Khan rode his bike here tonight.
And he was on a robotics team that came in, what?
Oh, you're kidding?
What, the robotics team?
I know you, I saw that. You know, the, the robotics, I follow your Instagram. Cool.
All right, one of those is good.
One of those is good. Nobody's heard of Ted Lasso, have you? No, he's not a real person. It's a TV show. You gotta watch that, you love soccer. Ladies and gentlemen, our distinguished guests. We have some treats for you. It's in the kitchen. Actually, I have treats for you, please. Sorry, got you. So we'd like to invite you back to the kitchen, we have some cookies, we have a coffee, not that Turkish coffee. And some soft drinks, Turkish coffees.
Yeah, it is hard, but not everybody's got it.
No, not everybody, that's tough stuff. So, thank you again, very much, thank you. You're welcome. Go have some fun.
Thank you.
Item four, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Motion by Bowring, seconded by Kocarog. Clerk Kelik, please take the role.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero council members absent. We jump to item number eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total three million, seven hundred, thirty-two thousand, eight hundred, fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Uh, Mayor, probably for the last time, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet and on the city website.
Alderperson Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available in each council member's packet and on the city's website.
Second?
Seconded by Alderperson Bowring. City Clerk Kelik, please take the role.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
The bills have been approved for payment with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero council members absent. Committee of the whole items of business, number nine A, is to consider ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero seven, amending Title Four Business and License Regulations, Chapter Two Liquor Control, Section Ten Restrictions on Businesses of the Geneva City Code. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Kocarog. Ms. Dawkins?
So at the city council meeting on April seventh, twenty-twenty-five, under new business, the city council directed staff to bring back the topic of restrictions on the issuance of liquor license to the mayor, city council members, for discussion by the committee of the whole. That discussion took place last week, and so it is before you for your consideration this evening.
Just a, a quick note, uh, the vote at the committee of the whole meeting was four to four. I motioned in favor of advancing this to the council, because we had two council members absent that night, so this opportunity is to continue that dialogue if you so choose, with particular emphasis on, or with Alderperson Ruby and Alderperson?
Bowring.
Bowring. Otherwise, the floor's open.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderperson Bruno.
Uh, yeah, the, well, we've had the whole discussion last week, but in deference to the, uh, new attendees and the viewing public, I just wanted to restate my rationale for bringing this forward. But, uh, back, I believe it was twenty-sixteen, the, the ordinance was changed. Uh, I feel for partly political reasons, it seems, uh, in, uh, since I am retiring, since we are as far away from an election cycle as possible, I thought it pertinent or prudent that we, uh, visited to, uh, to see that there is not, uh, the, the least, uh, perception that there is, uh, politics involved. Fundamental question is, uh, conflicts of interest with liquor license holder, with, uh, the city, uh, doing enforcement actions against liquor license holders, um, voting on liquor licenses, uh, which could be their competition. Um, I, I, if we don't need to put our police in that position of, um, enforcing those, um, those codes uh, with, um, with a sitting representative on the, um, on the council, it seems, um, it seems prudent, I, I would not want to put them in that position if we can avoid it. Uh, the argument being to expand the, uh, uh, the candidate pool is, uh, doesn't seem to hold in my mind. We've, we've had, you know, quite the, uh, quite a turnout for candidates this year, we've had multiple contested races. You know, that law was changed to accommodate a small downstate city that simply couldn't populate their, their council. Uh, it, it just seems more, um, it seems prudent to give fewer opportunities for the, for the public perception of, of backroom dealing, or the, uh, or the idea that, uh, some people can be getting special treatment uh, with, uh, uh, when they're sitting on the council with regard to their liquor license. I, I think restoring to our, uh, original standards pre-two thousand sixteen, um, takes politics back out of it. Uh, I realize that, um, if someone will always think that there's politics involved, but, uh, I think it's, uh, I think it's prudent to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais? Alderperson Bowring.
Thank you. Um, so I unfortunately was not able to be present for the initial, um, discussion. I did watch, um, the video, um, and I think a lot of really compelling points were made, um, on both sides. Um, certainly, we don't want to create undue impediments for people seeking to take on this, um, important, but not very remunerated work of being on the council. That being said, uh, I concur with Alderperson Bruno, I think initially this came up, um, the minutes reflect this, specifically to allow a specific candidate who is interested in running to run, who also was a liquor license holder. I think also, um, allowing liquor license holders to take a seat on council puts, um, city staff, specifically the police, in an uncomfortable position. Um, I, I think it is distinct, in my view, from some of the other examples that were brought up by other councilpersons, um, at the last meeting. I think, uh, unlike, uh, moving violation, a DUI, fire code enforcement, um, the adjudication process, if I understand it, actually involves council or the mayor, um, if there is, um, a, a violation of the liquor license. Um, so I think that that presents quite a direct potential conflict of interest, and, um, given that the city council actually has extremely limited power to require anyone to recuse themselves if there is an actual conflict of interest, it seems to me that the one provision that we do have is to say that someone who might have this conflict of interest should not be on the council. And the point at which we have the opportunity to say that is now. With all due respect to the mayor, I don't agree with the perspective that was brought up last meeting, that if someone ran, they could and would just come before this body and get, it changed back. I think that involves so many hypotheticals, um, that, you know, any decision city council makes can be amended or changed in the future. My view is that my job here is to make the best possible decision, or to support the best possible decision, make the best policy that's possible. In my view, the best policy in this case is to revert to the pre-two thousand sixteen language. If a future council sees differently, and given that somebody does run, which it sounds like they are not legally prohibited from doing based on my consultation with city staff and the questions that I submitted today, um, they do have an opportunity to ask for things to be changed at that point, but I think then there would be a discussion held about, is this appropriate or not? Um, I... I guess fundamentally, I think that due process is very important, and I think that having liquor license holders, even ones for whom, um, liquor is not the main or sole source of their business, does present a conflict of interest. I think if we were to think of some of the businesses, um, on Third Street or on State Street, who hold liquor licenses, um, but also serve food or also provide some other service, for them to lose the ability to sell liquor potentially, I think is a threat to their potential bottom line, because we know that the margins for a lot of these businesses are very, very small. And again, as Alderperson Bruno brought up, I think both the perception and the potential reality of undue pressure, given the nature of, uh, like, access, is, is a potential problem, but then also we don't have enforcement other than this provision. So I know that some people have expressed the idea that this is a solution for which we don't actually have a problem, and I would say that we've not seen any problems, because this has not been allowed for very long. We have had, as far as I understand it, one candidate who held a liquor license, who ran for office, did not win the election, so we've not seen whether there's a great potential here or not. But I guess, you know, thinking about other levels of government, I would rather, um, hope for the best, plan for the worst. I think that once there is a problem, it is much more difficult to extract ourselves from it than it is to say that we think that this is not appropriate. If that eventually got changed down the line, I don't, I don't see that as invalidating anything or muddying anything, to me, that is a hypothetical that might, like, it's a, a bridge that the council could cross if it came up. Uh, I guess I will end with a question for the city attorney, or perhaps the city administrator. Am I correct in my understanding about the adjudication process for, um, liquor license violations? That it, it is actually something that comes before council?
It comes before the liquor commissioner, who is the mayor.
The liquor commissioner, which is the mayor. So, again, I think that...
And the chief of police is your, who brings the charges?
Okay. Um... I would not like to ask the chief of police or any member of our police force to come here and tell us their opinion, and I think that that speaks to part of the problem. We are their bosses. The mayor has the appointment power, the city council has the approval power, so I think essentially preventing a potential conflict of interest, preventing the possibility of them being put in an uncomfortable position is very important to me. I think that demonstrates respect for our police department. Um, I remember that one other alderperson brought up the idea of some kind of whistleblowing. I think we have a much simpler solution, and that solution is to revert to the pre-two thousand sixteen language. It's not at all an indication of lack of trust in our police force, it's not an indication of lack of trust of the entire class of liquor license holders. I simply think that we have rules about conflicts of interest for a reason, and, um, given our limited ability to enforce that, I think it makes sense, um, to use what we have at our disposal, and that is this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais? Alderperson Kilburg?
Yeah. Just a few, uh, brief thoughts. I think the point that, uh, the mayor and the council, by approving the issuance of a liquor license, are effectively saying the applicant is of good character and reputation. But somehow, we are still debating whether they are trustworthy enough to serve on the city council. It seems a bit hypothetical to issue or renew a liquor license if there are doubts about the character of the holder. So if we trust a person enough to issue a liquor license, why would we not trust them to serve on the city council? By the same token, by denying a license because we think the person is not of good character would make them eligible to hold office. Isn't that right? I believe that's correct. I think the problem with the whole ordinance is that we are defending it with some extreme tortured logic. Anytime we decide to make something more restrictive in the state, you should really have a compelling argument to do so, preferably with real-life examples to back it up. I haven't heard one. In fact, the point that we can change the ordinance to allow an elected liquor license holder to be seated argues for leaving really the decision in the first place entirely up to the voters begin with. And that reverts back to the fact that if they get elected, then we would seat them. And that's, that's where that, uh, line of logic flows. If we're willing to validate the voter's choice after the fact, there's no reason to not leave the decision to the voters in the first place. So, uh, I'll continue to, um, vote against making any changes to this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very brief.
Yeah, it was good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais? Alderperson Pashki.
Um, I'd like to actually make a motion to amend the existing language to include the language from the state statute that was shared with us in the, um, responses to questions.
In essence, Alderperson Pashki is offering amendment to amend our language under the liquor code, so it reflects more clearly the language in existing statute.
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mayor. On the motion, ladies and gentlemen, we can debate that and discuss that as you see fit. Alderperson Mayor, then Bowring.
I just want to ask if we ever motion the main law.
Yes.
Yes, we do. Yeah. Alder Person Bowery, then Kilburg?
Could I just ask for some clarification on what specific language this is?
Sure. We're going to ask the city administrator to read that.
Sure. And so just to make it clear, we're talking about keeping the ordinance as-is with the language that allows for city council to hold a license, and then the language that the statute further states is notwithstanding any provision of this paragraph to the contrary, "An alderperson or member of a city council may have a direct interest in the manufacture, sale, or distribution of alcoholic liquor, as long as he or she is not a law-enforcing public official or a mayor. To prevent any conflict of interest, the elected official with the direct interest in the manufacture, sale, or distribution of alcoholic liquor shall not participate in any meetings, hearings, or decisions on matters impacting the manufacture, sale, or distribution of alcoholic liquor. Furthermore, the mayor of a city with a population of 55,000 or less may have an interest in the manufacture, sale, or distribution of alcoholic liquor, as long as the council or board over which he or she presides has made a local liquor control commissioner appointment that complies with the requirements of Section 4.2 of this act." Does that help? What it does is it adds that language about, "They shall not participate in any discussions regarding the reason of our license."
Okay. So I have one procedural question, and then a substantive question, I think. The procedural question is, given that this is an amendment to the existing code, how does that interact with the main motion?
The main motion on the floor is to consider...
So is it amending the main motion, or is it amending...
It's amending by adding to, but the main motion still stands as this body considering the amended language of the code to prohibit...
So if the amendment were to pass, it would be not to the existing statute?
Correct. It would just be added to the main motion.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the substantive question is about enforcement. What recourse does city council have if a sitting city council member who was also a liquor license holder decided not to comply?
I believe the answer is none.
So that returns me to the main point I have, which is that it seems to me that actually the only avenue we have to ensure... Sorry. Just make sure there's nothing for... The only avenue that we have to ensure that there's not actually a conflict of interest down the line is to not allow liquor license holders to sit on the council. I would point out that if someone who holds a liquor license ran for city council and was elected, they could transfer, is there a process by which they could transfer that license to another member of their business?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. It seems to me that that creates an opportunity for someone to continue having a vested stake in a business that has a liquor license while they themselves are not put in a position of having to avoid a conflict of interest. I think the fact that while they may be infrequent, that we do have a past history of having liquor license violations is demonstrative of the fact that sometimes people do things they should not do, or sometimes things happen that have a consequence. And I think for that reason, I'm not interested in... I'm not interested in opening the door to something that we then have no ability to, like, I don't know, to deal with if a problem arises. I think... So, thank you.
Alder Person Bruno, for a second time, unless, this is on the amendment.
Right.
Correct. First time in the amendment. Then Malachi.
Just for clarity, so the amendment would keep the language that strikes the ability to hold a liquor license?
No, the amendment...
Oh, it would just completely mimic the states?
The amendment offered by Alder Person Pashke was to include language that currently exists in state statute into, quote, "our main motion to see..." It does not, in any way, shape, or form, amend the main motion, which is to prohibit a liquor license holder from holding office. That still stands. We're just kind of adding to the language, if you will, less archaic language, perhaps. So the main motion is to prohibit.
And that would still stand on that vote?
That would still stand.
Thank you.
Alder Person Bruno, anything else? Alder Person Kilburg?
My interpretation of that is, is that essentially, if you hold a liquor license, you can run and serve. The only thing is, is it restricts you from voting on any liquor license matters in the future, if you were elected and you're serving. So why are we incorporating recusal in this ordinance if, in fact, we're never going to have anyone that has a liquor license that's serving?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that matter. He's been cogitating over here for some time.
I think what that amendment does is it essentially says that you can serve if you have a liquor license, the only restriction being that if there's a matter as it relates to a liquor license violation or whatever that might come before the council, they'd need to recuse themselves and not participate in the vote, which seems, you know, I'm very acceptable with that, and I think most people probably around this body would be open to that.
I think that's correct. I think this amendment would basically be a replace...
Yeah.
Replacement of the language, so that I think it's basically a cut and replace, because the exception, say, if it's as-is, this is an exception to something that doesn't, wouldn't be needed.
Yeah.
This is a notwithstanding for something that would never come into play. So they diametrically oppose one another. So I would go back to Alder Person Pashke's amendment, and if it's her intent that this attached to the current language, so be it. I think that would cause some...
I think that's clarification. The current language as it stands in the vote today, or the current language in the ordinance they're considering?
Correct. It needs to be in...
It needs to be clear.
Yeah. So if you're intending, Alder Person Pashke, that this be attached to the removal of the language, of the exception, because if you know, the motion is a strike, right?
Okay.
Or if you were intending to attach it with the language as-is...
The language as-is.
To Alder Person Kilburg's thing, it at least flows that. Otherwise, they diametrically oppose one another.
That is what I intended.
Yes.
Alder Person Pashke, that's, the intention was to...
To further clarify existing language.
Not the language that's on this floor?
Right.
Okay.
Can we do that?
You can, but, I mean, that would be, like I said, it'd be a cut and replace. That would be a rewrite essentially of the proposition for the council.
So this seems like a direct opposite of the answer that I got when I first asked this question at the beginning of this...
With respect to the amendment?
With respect to the amendment. So...
Maybe.
Okay. So I guess my question is, if what Alder Person Pashke wanted to do was amend not the proposed language of the main motion that we are talking about, but to, and I'm not sure if this is what she wants still, because I'm confused, but to amend the existing unchanged language that, we'll say, post-2016 language?
Yep.
That's what you wanted?
Yes.
Is that allowed as an amendment, given that it's essentially negating this? But I don't mean like, so she's not asking to add it to the proposed language? We need to vote up or down on the proposed language at some point, right? For the proposed, the proposal?
Right. The amendment is the only thing on the floor right now. So this council can say yes?
But can she amend the exist, like, okay, I feel like we need two different terms, because existing could mean both things. Can we, can she offer a proposal to amend language that is different from the motion that we are discussing?
She can.
Then what is to prevent, like, what is to prevent...
By the way, anyone...
An amendment on something, like, on some other, is it because it's related to this particular language, even though it's different language?
Mm-hmm. Someone could make an amendment to turn something on its head if they wanted to, as long as the topic is germane. Again, the council doesn't have to accept it, they can vote down the amendment and go back to the main motion.
Sure. I understand that. I guess where I'm getting confused is if what she's proposing...
Main street.
I don't understand how she...
To allow parking on the main street.
I don't understand how it's an amendment to the main motion to both undo the motion, the main motion, and add this to that language.
And as I suggested to Alder Person Kilburg's point, as at least it was structured, those are contradictory notions. So if it's the alderperson's intent to attach this language to an unamended, the language of the original ordinance, that would flow. If otherwise, these two provisions contradict one another. No doubt about it.
Okay. Can I call the existing ordinance version A and the proposal, the proposal that we are, the proposal that's part of the main motion, version B, for clarity's sake? Because I still feel like I'm not confident that I'm understanding what you're saying. So I get it that if this were added to version B, it essentially undoes the change. I get that. Is it possible, like, procedurally, to add it to version A rather than version B? Do you understand?
No. Say it again, I'm sorry.
Okay. Version A is the existing statute post-2016. Version B is the proposal that is the main motion on the floor. If what Alder...
Okay. A is as-is.
Right. So if Alder Person Pashke is proposing adding it to version A, is that procedurally allowed at this point?
No.
Okay.
It's not before us.
Okay. So I, thank you, because that was, I think what I kept trying to ask, and it is confusing, finding the verbiage, so what is essentially on the table in terms of the amendment proposed is version B with this addition, which essentially is a different way of stating provision A, or version A.
Those two things are opposed.
No, no. No. Version B and the amendment are opposed. Version A and the amendment are different ways of stating the same thing.
Perhaps, but that's not in front of us.
I understand that, but I believe that what Ald, I could be wrong. I believe what Alder Person...
Well, that's hers. She can withdraw or push ahead with it.
So I just wanted legal clarification about what was allowed and what we were actually...
Either one would be allowed.
Either one what?
Could be allowed to move forward, but she has moved to amend with this language...
Version B.
Correct.
Right. But I think that there is confusion, so I'm not sure that's what she intended to do.
Okay. Again, Alder Person, that's for her. No offense.
I...
You can vote it down.
So I understand that. I just wanted to make sure we were all talking about the same thing, because I think it gets confusing, given that the road we're going down. So I'm happy for her to opine on whether that's what she intended or not, or if that's what she wants to do.
Before I recognize Alder Person Kocarog, Alder Person Pashke, do you wish to opine?
Yes. So if, in fact, the motion is not allowed to change existing statute, then I would retract it. I'm not looking to change the change to language that's being proposed. I was looking to change what we already have on the books.
So you withdraw your amendment?
If that's not allowed, then I withdraw it.
It's allowed, but it, they conflict, and it would be a challenging provision.
But it, no.
What she's asking is, is it allowed for her to amend version A? And I think you said no. Right.
Right. No.
So that's what she says is not allowed.
That's what I'm asking. So I retract.
The amendment has been withdrawn. Okay. The main motion, ladies and gentlemen. To the main motion, I'll recognize Alder Person Kocarog first, then Alder Person Ruby.
I just wanted to share my thought patterns over this past week. I sort of agree with Alderman Bruno. I didn't like the circumstances that it was passed in the first place. Seemed like it was done for the wrong reasons at the wrong time. But in the end, I do want to allow liquor licensees to be alderpeople. And so my thought was to sort of put it back to where it was, and then sort of have a discussion on that. When I learned during the meeting last week that we're pretty much obligated to just reiterate what's in the Illinois statute, with this one provision being optional in the state, pretty much.
We can make it more restrictive.
Yeah.
We can make it more restrictive. At a minimum, we can keep the state statute or be more restrictive.
But ultimately, I don't think the logic is there, pretty much like Alderman Kilburg is saying. There's no reason to vote, to change it back, to have a policy discussion that we're already having here and had in 2016 and 2012, just so that we could possibly turn it back. So in the end, I think what they did in 2016 established the results that I would support, which is allowing liquor license holders to be in office. And so I believe, I'm a little confused on the motion now, but I believe I'm against the motion now?
Yeah.
Is that right? I do not want...
The main motion's on the floor.
Yeah. And so I'll be changing my vote from Cal here to vote to defeat this. Thank you.
Alder Person Ruby.
Thank you. My question is more, I may have to circle back to it in new business, but I'm just curious how this became an agenda item in a matter of a few weeks, when we have other things, such as, I've requested, it's been a few months that I've been waiting for lobbyist report to come to council, for the Aurora CVB updates, possible extension to come to council. I could list off a lot of other things, but you get the idea. I'm just wondering how and why an item that was brought up by somebody with a very different relationship to you is addressed so quickly.
Well, A, I don't understand the last sentence of that statement. B, it was brought up by Alder Person Bruno on April 7th. It was asked of me, does anyone object to revisiting this issue? No one objected, therefore is brought forward.
Okay. Well, what about the lobbyists and the CVB?
The other issues have scheduling elements tied to it.
And we haven't heard any updates on those?
Correct. We have not solidified a scheduling update on either of those terms.
Okay.
Alder Person Malachi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question, I believe it's still germane to the conversation, about that state statute language, and how we as a body interpret the words "shall not." Is that, as I look at that language, when it says "shall not," it's not giving, like, a member of council an opportunity to recuse themselves or not. It's "shall not." So it's pretty cut and dry to me that that's how it's worded. So I was just wondering if there's any other thoughts on how that language is interpreted differently than how I interpret that language? So... Well, it doesn't say, like, they're encouraged, they're encouraged to not participate. They're, you know, it just says, clearly it says "shall not," so I mean...
Right. So the question is, who, what's the enforcement mechanism?
Correct.
So there is, I mean, unless somebody, I guess, falls suit, I don't know.
Are there any other examples where we have something that says "shall not," and that something's enforced? I mean, you know... I mean, you know, if I, I mean, I guess if it's like a personal thing, if it's, right. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Of course. Alder Person, this is the main motion, ladies and gentlemen. Alder Person Kocarog.
I just wanted to address the, I think it's related, cut me off, run. Alderman, Alder Person Pashke's motion that she withdrew, I am fine with that language. And maybe to simplify this, this is what I was going to say during the motion debate, was just that maybe we can bring that back after this vote is decided and talk about just adding that language about not participating in the vote that she was referring to from the Q and A and from the state of Illinois statute. Does that make sense? You look confused, but Ron seems to.
I don't know if we can actually bring it back as a separate item because.
No, 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 not tonight. I mean at a future date.
Okay. Alder Person Pashke.
Can I ask for further clarification on that?
Sure.
Sorry. Would that actually require a vote if we have to include the state language anyway? I mean, the, the explanation for House of ill fame is that that's state language and we have to follow that. So if this is in the state language, why would it require a vote to add this?
It, it, it's a, I guess generally speaking to your point, it's a code cleanup. It's a matter of.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Person Swanson.
Thank you. I liked Alder Person Pashke's amendment, and I think it addresses the concerns of most of the people here. And, and I would make a motion that instead of striking the paragraph that we have that allows the liquor license holder to run for office, we just replace that with the current Illinois statute.
main motion is appropriate, seconded by Alder Person Mayor.
So a liquor license could, a liquor license holder could run for office, could be seated, could maintain their liquor license, and would have to follow the Illinois statute as to recusal.
I would offer this as perhaps a, an opportunity to pause.
And I think that, that addresses all of the problems that we've had on this day as so far.
I'll defer to the city attorney and/or city administrator on a quick review, but That would require additional cleanup language as well. that would be a, in essence, a wholesale amendment to the main motion, but. So perhaps the best move forward, so we can discuss this more cleanly, is to offer a
[inaudible]
motion to postpone to a particular date.
Will that change though, considering?
We have to add additional cleanup.
What's the additional cleanup that makes this confusing?
Just to clarify, it's not additional language that makes this confusing. There's additional language within the same section that is changed in the statute that is not reflective in our code. So if we're going to do some cleanup, maybe it makes sense to do all the cleanup.
Well, are there two pieces there? Is one just cleanup and the other is, is addressing the core argument that we're trying to address? I'm trying to address the core argument. I don't really care about the other cleanup. The core argument would be that we're making it equal to what Illinois statute is, and that has stronger recusal rules that I think was giving a lot of people pause.
One moment, and then Bruno Kocarog Bowery.
So the, the motion's appropriate, it's been seconded. If the council wishes to go forward with this provision, the only caveat, because I, I haven't read the statute in its entirety, so if there is any definitional components that relate to this language, we're going to need to make sure everyone's on the same page about additional cleanup, so that we are actually following in its entirety, not just in spirit, but to the letter of the State Liquor Control Act.
The page I'm following is what Stephanie read to us.
Oh, I, I totally understand that. You've made that clear. I'm, I'm just saying if there are other language provisions that need to be cleaned up in our ordinance that may relate to or reflect on this item, it may require additional amendments.
I understand that, but I'm making, I'm clarifying my motion is what Stephanie read earlier made sense to me, and I like that, and I think that would address the problems that we have before us today.
So your amendment to the main motion, you wish to stand?
I do.
Okay. And the second concurs, Mayor? Okay. Replacing this entirety, got it? Bruno Kocarog Bowery.
Thank you, Mayor.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. So replacing that text, I believe, I just wanted to be clear, we've established that I, that there is no enforcement mechanism at this council to enforce that recusal. It, it's, it's helpful to have suggestive language, but we don't have any way to enforce that.
I would offer, it's not that it's suggestive, it is a shall not. So you are a self-governing body, so you would, person shall not.
It, 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 see, it, were the question called, and I'm not calling the question, were the question called, we're one minute away of laying this to rest. I think it is absolutely valid to come back, if this motion fails, the main motion fails, that we come back at a future date and, and add the, the state language. It, it seems like there's, we're introducing a lot more confusion as to what we're trying to do here tonight. What was on the agenda had one clear goal. It'll, it'll pass or fail, but it's, it doesn't seem a difficult ask to come back at a future date if it fails tonight to incorporate state language.
Alder Person Kocarog, then Alder Person Bowery. On the amendment.
On the amendment. I would, a lot of what Alderman Bruno just said, it's confusing, I don't think this is fair to the voters out there. They're looking at this, they want to know what we're going to come away with, the decision up or down on whether a liquor, liquor license holder can be an older person moving forward and, or, yeah, moving forward from tonight in the city of Geneva. So this totally muddies, in my opinion, the main motion. Not that that's illegal or inappropriate, according to Robert rules, but maybe I think it is appropriate because it's so convoluted and the way the amendment. I'm hearing from Attorney Sandak, this is not advised at this time. There's other language to be cleaned up, and I'll go back to my earlier comment, which says, let's just do an up and down vote on the main motion that'll establish where we're at and what language updates we need to incorporate at a future date. So straightforward, I say, let's get rid of this confusion, go back to the main motion, vote, and move on with our agenda.
Alder Person Bowery. On the amendment.
Oh dear, my mic's been on the whole time, my apologies. So I tend to agree with what Alder Person Kocarog just said. I would prefer to have an up or down vote on the main motion. I would like to follow the advice of our staff and our attorney that if we want to incorporate new state statute language, we do that in a, like, measured, thoughtful way, so that we do it all at once and we don't wind up with a hodgepodge. I don't think that's in the best interest of anyone going forward. I don't feel that adding this language addresses the concerns that I have with the main motion because this language does not have any greater enforcement ability than what we have right now. But recusal is only one part of the problem to me. And it may be that other people don't see this as an issue. I see the active management and, like, oversight of liquor license holders by our police department, which is run by a director who reports to city council and the mayor, as essentially putting our police department in an uncomfortable position. I think that's not appropriate, and I don't want to put them in that position. I think it's one thing for someone, a patrol officer, to stop someone for a moving violation. I think it's another thing when you are trying to oversee whether or not a liquor license is, liquor licensee is complying with all of the regulations that they have to comply with. I just think those are apples and oranges, and I, I guess most other members of this council are not concerned with that, but I think, I think it puts our staff in, in an inappropriate position, and I think the fact that we can't, like, ask them to come and tell us what they think is exactly indicative of the fact that this is starting to blur a line. I think probably most city council members would agree that it would not be fair to ask our police chief to come and tell us what he thinks about this. He's going to have to do whatever we say, one way or another, and he reports to the mayor on liquor license issues. I think, I think it's cleaner and better to keep these things separate. So I'll end it there. Thank you.
Anyone else on the amendment, as offered by Mr. Swanson and seconded by Ms. Mayor? Mr. Kilburg.
No, I, I'm convinced that if we talk about this for about another 10 minutes, anyone in Geneva that would hold a liquor license probably would never consider to run for this council.
On the amendment, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call. No, sorry. This is a, this is a meeting with respect to the debate from the council. This is not a public meeting or public hearing on the matter. An a is to incorporate the language as proposed by Alder Person Swanson, seconded by Mayor, and nay is not to include. City Clerk?
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Nay.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
With seven ayes, three nos, the amendment has been passed. The main motion as amended is on the floor.
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
What is the ma, main motion as amended?
The main motion on the floor is as stipulated in your packet, which includes the new revised language as proposed by Alder Person Swanson and voted. The new, the main motion is to allow, excuse me, the main motion is to prohibit liquor license holders.
No, no. It's a gut and replace.
It's a gut and replace.
Yeah, so the red lines back in.
Back in.
And this language is passed.
Okay.
So.
In that effect, it would allow.
It would allow liquor license holders from holding office at the city council level in the city of Geneva.
And they recuse themselves? Is that part of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Shall not, shall not is the language.
So the, the ordinance has been a gut and replace. So the language that was up for removal is not being removed. It's in. It stays as is, and the additional language, which was in the city administrator's packet, which she read, is now attached to that language. So it permits a citizen with, that holds a license, a liquor license, to run, and then that person would have to recuse herself or himself under that provision.
Alder Person Bowery.
What are all of the issues that a liquor licensee would need to recuse themselves from?
The question was, what, are, are there a list of issues that perhaps a liquor license holder would have to recuse him or herself, should it come before the council?
So the statute, the language that the amendment is adding says that the elected official with the direct interest in the manufacture, sale, or distribution of alcoholic liquor shall not participate in any meetings, hearings, or decisions on matters impacting the manufacture, sale, or distribution of alcoholic liquor.
So does that include festivals? Does that include street closures?
The manufacture, sale, and distribution.
But, right, so distribution is impacted by street closures, is impacted by festivals, is impacted by a whole host of things. So I guess I'm concerned that this, as Alder Person Kocarog was suggesting, is muddying things because now they are allowed to be elected, they are allowed to be seated, but it is not clear what we are asking them to recuse themselves from discussing or voting on. Could we get a legal interpretation on that?
I think it's pretty clear.
It's in the liquor license law. It's in the section that says liquor license.
No, Alder Person Bowery has the floor still, but I understand.
Could I, sorry, city attorney, could you clarify for me? Is that correct or incorrect?
Well, I don't think you're wrong. I think we would see on a case-by-case basis, whenever liquor was implicated, and if there were a sitting member of the council, she or he would be obviously duty-bound to make a judgment call on recusal. Colleagues could obviously speak to her or him offline, and if there were a challenge, meaning a gray area on whether this was actually something contemplating or requiring recusal, we would have a discussion on it. But I, I, I hear you that I don't know that that is hard and fast. I think it would be case by case.
There would be a discussion on it that would look like what? Like, sorry, there.
If you think someone shouldn't vote on something because liquor's involved, and that person who has a license disagrees, there would, there could be a discussion, a point of order brought on whether that person.
So that would happen at the time the issue was on the agenda, then someone on council would need to say for each issue?
If she or he did not recuse automatically, the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Call the question.
The question's been called. A call to, a call the question motion requires a second.
Second.
Seconded by Marx. A call the question requires two-thirds affirmative vote. With that, city clerk, please take the roll. Two-thirds required to call the question.
Mike Kocarog?
No.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Bruno?
Nay.
Bowery?
Nay.
Maliki?
Nay.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
It fails to reach the two-third requirement. The question has not been called. The floor is open regarding the main motion as amended. Alder Person Bruno.
The, the original motion has been replaced. It doesn't address the issues that those of us that have concerns over, over that, but it is an improvement. We will not have an opportunity to, to address the issues that I'd hope so. I would support the improved language, even if it's unenforceable. Thank you.
Anyone else on the main motion as amended? Alder Person Kocarog.
I just want to clarify. So I'll make sure I get my vote right. So I had said earlier I planned on voting it down, which would have allowed liquor licenses to be, continue to be elected to office. Now with the main motion, I believe I'm going to be voting yes if my intent goes that way.
That's correct.
Do I have that? And that will allow the current law to continue with this additional language. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Simple majority vote is required. Clerk Keilich, please take the roll.
Bowery?
Bowring?
Nay.
Maliki?
Nay.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
It fails to reach the two-third requirement. The question has not been called. The floor is open regarding the main motion as amended. Alder Person Bruno?
The, the original motion has been replaced. It doesn't address the issues that those of us that have concerns over, over that. But it is an improvement. We will not have an opportunity to, to address the issues that I'd hope so. I would support the improved language, even if it's unenforceable. Thank you.
Anyone else on the main motion as amended? Alder Person Kassarog?
I just want to clarify. So I'll make sure I get my vote right. So I had said earlier I planned on voting it down, which would have allowed liquor licenses to be, continue to be elected to office. Now with the main motion, I believe I'm going to be voting yes if my intent goes that way.
That's correct.
Do I have that? And that will allow the current law to continue with this additional language. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else on the dais? Simple majority vote is required. Clerk Keilich, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Let's make it unanimous. With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero council members absent, ordinance 2025-07 as amended has been approved. Item 9B, consider ordinance 2025-08, amending Title I Administrative, Chapter 6 Municipal Officers and Employment, Section 1-6-2C Appointment Terms of Office of the Geneva City Code. Motion by Pashke, seconded by Bowring. Ms. Dawkins?
So the ordinance for consideration recommends the term of appointment officials be changed from annual appointment to a term not to exceed the term of the mayor as authorized by state statute. Should an appointment, appointed official retire or leave, this proposed change would aid in recruitment. Appointments are made by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. The power of appointment may not be delegated by the mayor to any other person or group, and the council may not reserve that power for itself. Per the statute, the mayor may remove any appointed officer on any written charge prior to the end of that officer's term, whenever they believe that to be in the interest of the municipality to demand removal. As you may recall, last week, these were in one ordinance. We bifurcated, so the one is on the consent that everyone unanimously agreed to, and then this one is here for discussion this evening.
Floor is open for discussion. Seeing none, sensing none, City Clerk, please take the roll. A simple majority is required to pass this ordinance 2025-08.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Nay.
Mayor?
Aye.
Six and the affirmative, four and the negative, ordinance 2025-08 has passed. We skip to, ladies and gentlemen, believe it or not, item 10, Presentations of Ordinances and Resolutions, 10A, is to approve ordinance 2025-12, granting a variation to reduce street side yard parking setback along Woodlawn Street. Motion by Maliki, seconded by Pashke. Stephanie?
Mayor, if it's okay with you, I just want to provide one introduction for both items 10A and 10B.
Absolutely.
These both relate to 427 East State Street. So 427 East State Street is improved with a one-story commercial building located in the B3E Business District at the northwest corner of East State Street and Woodlawn Street. This property previously operated as office space, but has been vacant since 2022. New owners and local restaurateurs Nick and Jimmy Nicolau from Rigginato's are applying for a special use permit to convert the building into a takeout, sit-down style restaurant called Honeybird. The applicants are not proposing any significant changes to the exterior of the existing building, but are proposing to replace and expand the existing parking lot. The expansion would create six onsite parking spaces, a 24-foot wide two-way drive aisle, and space for a dumpster enclosure. Due to the narrow width of the lot, 60 feet, the applicants are requesting a variation to reduce the street yard parking lot setback along Woodlawn Street from 30 feet to 11.1 feet. The applicants are also requesting relief from the interior parking lot landscaping requirements. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April 10, 2025, the commission unanimously recommended the city council approve the requested variation, special use, special use permit, and landscaping relief. We do have the applicants here with us this evening, as well as Director DeGroot, and then just since I provided a large overview, currently this is just on the variation to reduce the street yard parking setback.
This is only on item 10A. Are there any questions or comments from the council for either Mr. DeGroot and/or the applicant? Seeing none and sensing none, a simple majority vote is required. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. This council has approved ordinance 2025-12. Moving on to item 10B, which is ordinance 2025-13, is to grant a special use permit for a restaurant and relief from the interior parking lot landscaping requirement at 427 East State Street.
So moved.
Bruno makes the motion, Marx makes the second. There's no additional commentary from Ms. Dawkins. Are there any questions related to item 10B? Alder Person Bruno?
Is the business owner here tonight?
Yes.
If, would I?
There's questions for the applicant. We invite you to the podium.
Please, if you can approach, I always like to bring business owners for these types of things up to tell us about your, your business that's, that's coming in here.
Well, it's, it's kind of a takeout dine-in, smaller place than Rigginato, and it'll be a kind of a roasted chicken, kind of a, a take on like fried chicken, but you know, we're still working on the menu exactly, but it'll be a little different than some of the chicken places around, but you know.
And roasting, you said?
Roasted is like pressure fried chicken.
Yeah, it requires special equipment.
It's a little special equipment, yeah.
Okay. Well, welcome to your, good luck with your new.
Thank you.
New project.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
City Council.
Anyone else on the dais? Alder Person Kilburg?
I'd just like to comment that over the 10-plus years that Rigginato's has been on the east side of Geneva, they have been somewhat of an economic engine for our neighborhood. If you drive by, their parking lot is full almost every evening. They've run an excellent business. They keep excellent grounds, and I'm sure that Honeybird will be consistent with what they've done with Rigginato's, and it'll be an asset to the community.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second on ordinance 2025-13. Again, a simple majority is required to advance this matter and approve this matter. City Clerk, Keilich, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-38 has been approved by this council with nine affirmative votes, one nay vote, and zero council members absent. We're at public comment, ladies and gentlemen. Now's an opportunity for anyone joining us here in the chamber to share with, speak to, address the council. It's your chance to speak, it's our chance to listen. The floor is open. We traditionally begin on the south side of the room, and we'll let you self-govern who goes first. How about the north side of the room?
Just wanted to give you a quick little update. On this last weekend, we had the Coffee Crawl downtown Geneva. It was a very good success. We got, I have not seen it, but I understand we got front page coverage on the Beacon News in Aurora. It's a nice article, I did see the printout of it. One of the comments that the chamber received was as a couple had come into town, they came into town early at 10:30, they visited a number of the stops, we had 30 stops, enjoyed their time, shopped, dined, and finally left Geneva at 7:30 at night. So this is the type of activity that, you know, benefits everyone in Geneva, the business community, and then subsequently the residents as a whole. So it was a very successful event. This coming weekend, we have the citywide garage sale going on. It is on Friday and Saturday, the 25th and 26th. There are 66 households that have signed up for this. When you go to the listing for what they have, not only is their address included, but also the primary items that they have for sale are those items that they're trying to market. So you can, you can, you know, pick and choose where you want to go, and this is obviously open to the residents here in Geneva. Given the fact that things have gone a little late, I did just want to make a quick comment about something that is coming up on the Cow meeting. I know that we're talking about the upcoming grant program. The executive board for the chamber, we had a few questions. I reached out to Ms. Dawkins about that this afternoon. She actually invited me to call her this afternoon to, you know, just clarify some of the points. I was not available, but I do believe that we will have that opportunity to clarify the issues that we have, and we look forward to continuing our longstanding relationship of working with the city of Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is there any issue?
Yes, sir. Welcome. Good evening.
Evening. My name is Rick Wilson. I live on the corner of Woodlawn and Summit Street, pretty close to where the new chicken spot is going to be going in. So I'm, I'm definitely pro allowing, and thank you for allowing those parking lots to happen, because that intersection has become a little bit of a headache and a lot of traffic that flows through there, with the parking that's still available on the street with the bagel place, and this chicken place coming, it's going to be even more increased traffic, and to turn right out of the new chicken place to go to State Street, I think is going to cause some problems potentially in the future where there's a lot of congestion with cars already parked on the street, turning right out of there, cars that are coming in on Woodlawn. It's already kind of jammed up, so I'm just hoping that in the future, we can look at maybe eliminating the parking on Woodlawn for that block and maybe Summit Street as well, to encourage the use of the parking lot and to eliminate any potential accidents with the increased traffic. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? New business from the dais? Anyone about anything? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion by Kassarog. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. We'll take just a moment before the committee of the whole meeting. The microphones are being turned off.
All right, we're going to get going on our next meeting. Good evening, my name is Becky Ruby. I'm third board alderperson along with Dean Kilburg. I'll be the chair of tonight's committee of the whole meeting. Everyone is present.
Okay. Then I would be voting against that, just because I don't understand that change.
Alderperson, mayor.
This is an expansion of the existing special use, correct? It's not a new special use?
That's correct.
Okay. So you have to do revised calculations for an expansion of the special use that exists today?
There's two additional buildings, the new administration building plus the maintenance building, which are adjacent to each other. So that's why the rezoning had to be done.
Okay. And rezoning comes with all the necessary forms and calculations. Okay.
Anyone else on the dais? City clerk, simple majority is required to approve ordinance 2025, excuse me, resolution 2025-38. City clerk, please take the roll.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-38 has been approved by this council with nine affirmative votes, one nay vote, and zero council members absent. We're at public comment, ladies and gentlemen. Now's an opportunity for anyone joining us here in the chamber to share with, speak to, address the council. It's your chance to speak, it's our chance to listen. The floor is open. We traditionally begin on the south side of the room, and we'll let you self-govern who goes first. How about the north side of the room?
Just wanted to give you a quick little update. On this last weekend, we had the coffee crawl downtown Geneva. It was a very good success. We got, I have not seen it, but I understand we got front-page coverage on the Beacon News in Aurora. It's a nice article. I did see the printout of it. One of the comments that the chamber received was as a couple had come into town, they came into town early at 10:30. They visited a number of the stops, we had 30 stops, enjoyed their time, shopped, dined, and finally left Geneva at 7:30 at night. So this is the type of activity that, you know, benefits everyone in Geneva, the business community, and then subsequently the residents as a whole. So it was a very successful event. This coming weekend, we have the citywide garage sale going on. It is on Friday and Saturday, the 25th and 26th. There are 66 households that have signed up for this. When you go to the listing for what they have, not only is their address included, but also the primary items that they have for sale are those items that they're trying to market. So you can, you know, pick and choose where you want to go. And this is obviously open to the residents here in Geneva. Given the fact that things have gone a little late, I did just want to make a quick comment about something that is coming up on the Cow meeting. I know that we're talking about the upcoming grant program. The executive board for the chamber, we had a few questions. I reached out to Ms. Dawkins about that this afternoon. She actually invited me to call her this afternoon to, you know, just clarify some of the points. I was not available, but I do believe that we will have that opportunity to clarify the issues that we have, and we look forward to continuing our longstanding relationship of working with the city of Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Welcome. Good evening.
Evening. My name is Rick Wilson. I live on the corner of Woodlawn and Summit Street, pretty close to where the new chicken spot is going to be going in. So I'm definitely pro allowing, and thank you for allowing those parking lots to happen, because that intersection has become a little bit of a headache and a lot of traffic that flows through there. With the parking that's still available on the street with the Bagel Place and this Chicken Place coming, it's going to be even more increased traffic. And to turn right out of the new Chicken Place to go to State Street, I think is going to cause some problems potentially in the future where there's a lot of congestion with cars already parked on the street, turning right out of there, cars that are coming in on Woodlawn. It's already kind of jammed up, so I'm just hoping that in the future, we can look at maybe eliminating the parking on Woodlawn for that block and maybe Summit Street as well, to encourage the use of the parking lot and to eliminate any potential accidents with the increased traffic. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? New business from the dais. Anyone about anything? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion by Kassarag. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. We'll take just a moment before the committee of the whole meeting. The microphones are being turned off.
All right, we're going to get going on our next meeting. Good evening. My name is Becky Ruby. I'm third board alderperson along with Dean Kilburg. I'll be the chair of tonight's committee of the whole meeting. Everyone is present, and that was our call to order. Item two on the agenda tonight is to approve the Cow minutes from April 7, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We'll go Swanson and Bruno. I hear both your voices. Okay. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Okay, items of business. Item 3A, consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of underground cable and material in an estimated amount of $221,601.58 through Sourcewell from Wesco/Annexter. Is there a motion to approve? Marx and Bowring? And city administrator?
So the underground electrical materials are available through a Sourcewell contract awarded to Wesco Annexter. Sourcewell is a purchasing cooperative that competitively bids procurement contracts for government and nonprofit entities. The cable and materials will be used for the 2025-26 underground cable replacement program. Due to lead times and variances in prices, escalations could apply at the time of delivery. All cable and materials meet city of Geneva specifications, and with us this evening, we have superintendent Holton, who can answer any additional questions.
Any questions on the dais? Discussion? Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Item 3B, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with WBK Engineering in the amount of $199,199 for Phase 1 engineering services for the South Street and South 7th Street Improvement Project. Okay, moved by Bowring, seconded by Pashke and city administrator?
Okay, so in 2016, the city council adopted resolution 2016-80, authorizing a professional services agreement with WBK Engineering to provide Phase 1 design services for South and South 7th Street. Geneva had secured a local agency functional overlay funding for the construction and was obligated to fund the engineering. In 2017, the funding was rescinded and design work ended. The city has since secured funding, and then 2028, Kane and Kendall, KKCOM, fund to fund the engineering through their STPL program, a lot of acronyms, so I'll let Director Babica explain all that to you, and has applied for an ITEP grant, but is still obligated to fund the engineering. In addition to completing other projects for the city, WBK has previous project experience and has relevant experience from assisting in submitting the STP and the ITEP grants. Staff is confident in their abilities to complete this assignment and recommends the acceptance of their proposal. And as mentioned, we do have Director Babica with us, who can explain what the KCOM, STPL, and the ITEP grant are all about.
Thank you. Any questions from the dais? Kassarag?
Thanks, Director Babica.
My pleasure.
I was just wondering if you could review this. I wasn't here in 2016, I think. It's been a while. So what are, what are we trying to do and improve with 7th and South?
So they're actually two fundamentally different projects now. In 2016, the Laffo Project was a resurfacing project because why call it a resurfacing project, being called a Laffo Project. And the Kane Kendall Council of Mayors changed the emphasis of how they were going to spend their allocation of federal and state funds, and they eliminated the Laffo portion of their grant funding. So now it's all basically transportation enhancement projects. And STPL is Surface Transportation Program Local, not to be confused with State. And now the projects are, we've gone from a resurfacing of South Street and South 7th to a, for lack of a better word, a partial reconstruction and widening to allow for a full lane bike path. We generated, we received a lot of complaints last year when we had to go to a charo system instead of the dedicated bike paths because the width didn't allow it anymore. So this complies with the city's roadway bike plan program. It also complies with the county's long-term bike plan. We'll be able to connect to the Randall Road corridor and bring bikes and bike traffic in dedicated bike lanes all the way to the library and to the downtown corridor, including the train station. So it checks a lot of boxes. So that's the difference, is that we've gone from a simply resurfacing program to a widening and enhancement to pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities.
What is, so the charo, I understand what that is, is there now a curb separating the bike lane, or what is the, what's the bike lane improvement itself? I mean, besides wider and having a properly wide street?
The projected bike lane will still be an on-the-road bike lane. There will not be a curb separator. That creates a whole other level of infrastructure improvements that the roadway and the right-of-way would not be able to accommodate.
Okay. So it'll just still, how does it differentiate what we're going to have in a charo?
So what we have in a charo is basically just there's notifications out there with the lane markers notifying the drivers and the motorists that, hey, pay attention, there could be bicyclists ahead of you or near you. Once we're done with the South Street and South 7th corridor improvements with this project, there will be dedicated bike lanes on either side. So it'll be differentiated through paint, but it'll still be on pavement. But now the bicyclists will have a five-foot dedicated bike lane on either side of the road, plus the full-width lane of traffic to enhance safety of both the bicyclists as well as the motoring public.
The widening, I believe there's parking on the north side of the street now. We're talking South Street. Is that all going to be the same when we're all said and done with this project?
That's what the Phase 1 design is going to figure out. That's the first phase of the process, is basically a conceptual design, what is it going to take to do this? And then, we will be bringing forth some recommendations in the city council as we go into Phase 2, that if we're going to do this, then this is what the trade-off is going to be. We have to either, and I don't want to cause alarm, because I haven't seen the Phase 1 report, we don't know what those results are. But that is what the whole process of the Phase 1 report is, is to, okay, if this is what you want to do, this is what you're going to have to do to make that happen. And that portion of South Street, for example, we may be able to remain as a charo or as a bike lane marked inside of the parking stalls.
I was just going to ask you about that, yeah.
And then that's what gets shaped out in that Phase 1 design. So it's a bit premature for that, but on the western edge, basically west of the Public Works Building, where we have that rural cross-section, meaning that there's no curb there, which is ditches, that's where we're looking at widening within the existing right-of-way and doing some drainage improvements to help some of the residents out, as well as making some dedicated bike lanes for the public.
And then I think my last question is just, we're talking about South and 7th, kind of the way it appears here. So are we talking about really the same stuff down 7th Street? Or are we just South and 7th as sort of a terminal? Tough to answer.
No, no, I just don't want to overly complicate it, because South Street and South 7th are designated FAU routes. And FAU routes are federal evacuation routes, because they connect Route 38 to Randall Road, which provide a bypass route for the motoring public in the event that there was an evacuation. And that's why the corridor includes both streets. It enhances their probability of getting ITEP funding and makes it more attractive to secure funding through the council of mayors, because they are designated FAU routes. So they are, they get a higher rating.
Okay. So I guess the intent of my question was just, are there going to be improvements on 7th Street?
Correct.
And there are?
South 7th Street will most likely be more of a classic reconstruction, meaning a full-depth removal and overlay. But again, that is going to be determined in the Phase 1 study. It's premature to say exactly what the method is going to be, because that's what the study does, the analysis comes up with the most cost-effective method to complete the objectives.
And when would we see the report, do you think, approximately? Fall?
Fall would probably be premature.
Okay.
But it would be ready in the springtime, because in the springtime, we have to bring up the Phase 2 design contract in order to make, 2028's not that far away from a public works perspective. So we have to move pretty steadily and pretty rapidly through this process to make sure that, and when the grant is allocated to us in 20, construction season 28, that we're ready to go.
Got it.
So it's going to move
Yeah.
Pretty steadily.
Okay, great. I think that's all my questions. Sounds great.
Great questions.
Mayor?
At one point, we talked about the abandoned right-of-way on the north's extension of North 7th Street becoming a bike path. Is that still a potential, so that it connects to Wheeler Park?
That has been a project that we have been working on with the owners of the, depending on what development is going through, the old Seatron site, I think is probably the safest way to refer to it. But that has been a subject that staff has been working on with that property owner as part of their development process. That is independent of this project.
Okay. All right. Just as a frequent traveler down South Street there and seeing a lot of bikes coming from the train station commuting, the, one of the problems by the golf club is sun glare, so it's very hard to see people traveling on the right side of the road down South Street. Just something that I've noted over the years, that there's a shadow and bright light that, as it pertains to bike riders there, it's a little bit of a hazard.
I was not aware of that, but I will share that with WBK pending how tonight goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously?
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, item 3C, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the state of Illinois for the East State Street Road Project. Moved by Bowring, seconded by Kassarag, and administrator Dawkins?
So in 2005, the city initiated the East State Street project with awarding a Phase 1 study. This was followed by a professional engineering agreement with Bollinger Lock and Associates, BLA, to provide design services to complete the Phase 2 design executed in 2013. The project was issued for bid by IDOT with the lowest responsible bid in the amount of $30.16 million, exceeding the engineer's estimate of $24.2 million. Since this project has been awarded federal and state grants, a joint funding agreement, or JFA, for federally funded construction is required. While the JFA reflects the engineer's estimate, an amended JFA will be presented in the future for approval. The current federal and state grant funding is approximately $15 million, with Geneva responsible for $9.1 million. An additional $3 million grant funding has been applied for, and we are waiting award announcement. And again, we do have Director Babica with us to answer any questions you might have.
Swanson?
Thank you. In one of the schedules with this in the packet, there's changes in the agreement for traffic signals. And it shows the maintenance and the electrical energy and how the traffic signals on 38 are divided between city responsibility and state responsibility. And I would just like to know how we determine those percentages, because they don't make sense to me.
We don't. The state tells us what we're going to pay.
Okay. So, for example, Illinois 38 and Illinois 25, it's 100% state. That makes sense to me. They're both state highways. Illinois 38 and Glengarry's 50/50, one's our street, one's their street. That makes sense to me. Illinois 38 and East Side Drive is 100% Geneva, and that doesn't make sense to me. You're saying that the state of Illinois said this is it, accept it, and there's no recourse?
That's correct.
Okay. So it has nothing to do with whose road it is or the configuration, it's just what they tell us?
There is a master traffic signal agreement with the state of Illinois and the city of Geneva, and it goes through all the intersections. And I'd like to say there's a rhyme or a reason, but you can almost always guarantee that if it is a commercial entrance or a residential street, a city of Geneva right-of-way street, that we're going to be paying for that intersection. But as to making the determination as to who pays, typically, it's almost always the state of Illinois for their highways also. But depending on how the project was configured and how it was first approached and who advocated for adding that traffic signal, every intersection is almost a unique agreement through an intergovernmental agreement originally signed with the state of Illinois and the city of Geneva whenever that intersection was lit up. And it just becomes a grandfather clause and carries on forever and in perpetuity.
So once determined, that's the way it is?
That's the way it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Kilburg?
He was first.
Oh, no, sorry, you asked all your questions already. All right, one more.
I just want to make sure, it's probably self-explanatory, but the $3 million grant that we're waiting for will reduce Geneva's obligation, not anybody else's. Is that right?
That is going to be a negotiation between the city of Geneva and the state of Illinois.
Oh, boy.
And that is just, the state of Illinois knows that we put in for that same $3 million grant, and it is our intention that that $3 million grant will reduce our local shares. But we still have to, we still have to sit down with IDOT and have that final negotiation.
Okay.
I guess is the simplest way I can put that.
Okay. No, fair enough. That answers my question. Random question, but based on this, how do we build a state of Illinois for their electricity? Like, we literally send them a bill like anybody else, or are the wires configured differently so that they just do their own thing?
There is a meter that registers the energy, and then, to the best of my knowledge, we have not submitted a invoice to the state of Illinois for traffic signal energy. I'd have to double-check that, but typically all those, we do register that energy, so we have to account for that energy through the Electrical Enterprise Fund, but an invoice is not generated.
I guess I'm confused. How do they pay for it?
They don't.
So when, like, it says, like Bob was just asking, they pay for half?
Construction.
Construction energy? I thought that was ongoing.
Again, that is covered in the master traffic signal agreement that I don't, we're starting to drift into off-topic.
Maybe I'll follow up later.
I can provide you with the master traffic signal agreement if you'd like.
Sounds like great reading.
It's lovely.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Kilburg?
Thank you. Just so I understand the math, between the three, federal, state, and local sourcing, we are talking about $24.2 million roughly. And we saw that the bid was let on March 7 to RW Duntaman for $30 million, $30.2 million, which creates a shortfall of about $6 million. We're applying for $3 million in grant money that would reduce our obligation from 9.2 to 6.2. Are we talking about the $3 million grant being applied to the $6 million differential? And I guess my question would be then, are we looking at using reserves then to cover the remaining $3 million apparently, or what is the potential sourcing then? Because the project will commence this year with a lot of underground work. 26 and 27 East State Street will be torn up and under construction. So as far as the monetary piece, can you share the numbers there a little bit with me on how that might flow?
Okay. Within that $9 million share that's due to the city of Geneva,
Local.
Some of that is existing grant match requirements. So, for example, the STP funding that we have secured already for this has an 80/20 split. So the feds will pay for 80%, city has to match that remaining 20%. So that's part of that $9 million. Also included within that $9 million are the city's infrastructure Also included within that nine million dollars are the city's infrastructure utilities that are not eligible for federal or state funding. So, the new water main, the new sanitary, the modifications to an electrical vault, the new streetlights, not to be confused with the traffic signals, are all part of the city's costs that are hard costs that are built in that we cannot work away from. There's also funding sources that come from TIF two as well as TIF three, and then the infrastructure fund. So, there's basically five funding sources that comprise that nine million dollars. It is our intent that the three million dollars that we secure for ITEP funding are going to offset future costs with regards to the bike lane, for example, the amenities throughout the downtown corridor, the tree planting and landscaping, and the softscapes that we're going to be installing as part of the three phases for the East State Street corridor. So, that three million dollars, we're anticipating on offsetting those. Replacement of the sidewalks, ADA improvements, Americans with Disabilities Act improvements and whatnot. Like I said earlier, referred to earlier, that is going to be part of the ongoing negotiations that we have with IDOT to fund that gap, or whatever it turns out to be. Probably the most frustrating thing for myself, and I'm sure Dan will back, back this up when he comes up in the next round, is that we haven't even seen the bid unit prices yet because Springfield, those unit prices are all in Springfield, and they haven't released them. Even District One in Schaumburg has yet to see what the unit prices are. So, we haven't even had the opportunity to go through there and kind of sharpen our pencils and look and see what we can and, and can't work with those unit prices. One of the other funding objectives that we're anticipating on using besides this three million dollars is that we had earlier secured a four and a half million dollar land acquisition grant? Three and a half? But that process has been completed, but we still have remaining funds within there. So, we're going to be petitioning to CMAP, not to be confused with CMAC, or ITEP, or anything else, which is a Chicago Metropolitan, Kevin?
Agency for Planning.
Agency for Planning grant that helped fund the land acquisition for the corridor. That money still remains available, so we'll be petitioning to CMAP to release those funds for construction. There is also the potential that we may be able to secure additional funds through the King Kendall Council of Mayors through their STP program. Swigell was just able to secure some additional funds for their, their project, so now we're looking at that, again, sharpening our pencils and putting together a proposal for additional funding there. So, we have three potential funding sources, two, one of which is already locked in by the city, one that's, we're fully anticipating securing, and that's the three million dollar ITEP grant, plus the additional STP funds. And also, you have to recall or remember that we had budgeted for the construction to be over a two-year period, and now IDOT has extended it to a third-year cycle. So, we have a third year of the budget process to extend these expenses and help flatten those costs over a three-year period instead of a two-year period. And that'll be part of the budget process that we'll work with through the city administrator and the council, of course, to come up with a probable course of action to fund that gap. And that's assuming that IDOT doesn't participate with additional funds. Both myself and Dan have been getting regular questions by IDOT seemingly every other day or every third day at least, asking for clarification. So, that kind of implies to us that IDOT's also sharpening their pencils and looking at it too. This is a twenty-year project. IDOT, I'm fairly confident, wants this project off their books and done. So, we definitely want to keep up that momentum. And then there's, you know, the, the other possibility that, as you alluded to, the first year of this project is basically going to be utility relocations. Well, the contractor had to submit as part of their bid, three years' worth of traffic control. Well, if they're not working the first year, they don't have to do that first year's traffic control. So, there's potential for cost savings in the contract there. So, there's a, it's a multifaceted diamond that we're, we're chasing after on this one, and everybody wants to see this project through, but we also want to make sure that it's, it's not on the backs of the Geneva taxpayers. Hopefully, that answered your question.
That made it perfectly clear. Thank you. No, Rich, thank you. I know there's a lot of balls to juggle, and it seems as though you have a pretty good grasp of the funding. A lot, there is an unknown element to this. Is there a contingency with all of this with Dunteman? Is that built into that thirty million dollar figure?
Typically, it is.
Okay.
But having not seen those, the bid prices, we don't know how much of a contingency was built.
Because that could be another ten percent.
It, it could be. Anyway.
Which would be, I think, three million dollars now. Okay. Thanks, Rich.
My pleasure.
No, we want to see you through this project.
I think, besides having my grandchildren be born, I'm probably most excited about seeing this one through.
All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, item three D, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Bollinger Lock &amp; Associates in the amount of two million two hundred sixty-five thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars for the East State Street Phase Three Engineering.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Bruno, seconded by Casarag, and Dawkins, please.
Okay. So, kind of a continuation, as previously mentioned, in two thousand and thirteen, the city entered into a professional engineering agreement with Bollinger Lock &amp; Associates, BLA, to provide design services for the Phase Two portion of the East State Street construction project. That work has been completed, and the project was issued to bid through IDOT. The final phase construction is anticipated to begin in two thousand and twenty-five and continue through twenty, twenty-seven, three years, as Rich indicated. So, BLA has intimate knowledge and experience over the last twelve years, established a level of experience, expertise, and a successful relationship with the city for this project. With their intimate knowledge of the design and in accordance with the city code, staff is recommending that the city continue its relationship with BLA through the construction phase. So, again, we have Director Babica with us, but we also have Dan Bruckelmeier with BLA, who has actually been with the project since day one. So, you might want to bring him up to the podium just to find out what, what, what he was doing in two thousand and five.
Marks?
Rich, it might be able to be answered by Stephanie. Of this, you're going to retire on this project, aren't you?
It's a career project.
Thank you for all the work you've done. This is the final phase of the engineering, correct? This is it? And, and the engineering is always the city's cost, one hundred percent correct? We can get, you know, grants and stuff for it, but we're really responsible for this. Okay. So, so Stephanie and Rich, as, as part of this, we know that this isn't a budget right now, this, this two point two million roughly or two point three?
Correct. It is a budgeted amount within the various funds that I alluded to earlier.
Okay. And so, we knew this was coming? This is the final, unless there's any changes, this should really be the final phase of the engineering for this whole project from East State Street pass to the river, correct?
Correct. Right up through final project closeout and acceptance, which will probably be realistically in two thousand and twenty-eight.
Which means they give the final sign-up and says it's done the way we said it was going to be done.
Correct. It's a thirty-five month contract?
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, Casarag?
All right, got every question. Question for everything here tonight. In reading the contract, there was, I think, a yearly or an annual update to city council. And I guess I, I just thought I'd throw out there, what if we got bi-annual updates? And I'm more thinking of the public with congestion and businesses closed and things going on, you know? I don't know, is there a construction season to this project? Like, maybe the beginning and the end, here's what we accomplished? Or, I don't know if it just, or does that not even make sense? Because there's just not that much information to share.
So, I guess to kind of best answer your question is, we had kind of envisioned it contractually, the way it's proposed is, you know, once the contractor has been awarded, so that's where we're at now, is the city's accepted the bid, and then it goes down to Springfield. Once Springfield awards the physical contract to Dunteman, which you mentioned earlier was the awarded contractor, then they will release all of the information. They'll release the pre-con, they'll release all the contact information, subconsultants doing all the work, and then they'll give us a schedule. And one of the first questions that we're going to have for Dunteman is, being the manager of the overall construction project for the engineering perspective, is, when are you guys going to start? Because they may just say, you know what, AT&amp;T is going to take six months to relocate. I mean, I'm sure if you've driven down East State Street towards Kirk Road, you've seen some stuff going on, that's ComEd, they're relocating, Verizon's got to get in there, Nycor's got to get in there. So, Dunteman might just say, hey, we don't even want to come near this thing until the spring. But our intent is, once they've awarded that contract, we have a handle on when they plan, we're going to come in and do sort of a presentation on what the project is. Because this thing's been going on so long, I mean, I know Mayor Burns has been here for all of it, but, you know, some different people have been elected over the years, and it's just a lot, what is this project? And so, this is kind of an opportunity to kind of hit on what to expect, really, like the way they're going to construct it. Like, we, are they going to build the south side first? Are they going to build the north side first? What, what operations are you going to be anticipating? Then subsequently, at the each, end of each year, when kind of construction wraps up, which is usually in the Chicago area, November, December, when sort of the asphalt plants close down for the winter, that's when we'd come and say, okay, hey, listen, this is what we, we accomplished this year, this is what we envision occurring over the next year. But we've also resolved to work with the city. We're going to have an individual onsite every day, all day, when the contract is working. He's going to be providing, I believe, weekly, if not monthly, updates, which can be distributed to council, indicating the progress that's been done, working with the city's communications coordinator to post website updates, anything you want to do to kind of get information out. You know, the other thing that's going to be occurring here is, over at Fabian Parkway is, is a DuPage County-led project, but it does feed into Geneva. That's going to be under construction. I know Kane County Division of Transportation is looking at releasing the Kirk Road Bridge here. So, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on and just to kind of have a, sort of a central location for people to find out information about what's going on. That's, that's sort of the intent, is that we would do it biannually. But of course, if you guys want us to come in and give, you know, sort of updates or presentations, we can certainly accomplish that. I know the resident engineer, who's the individual who's going to be onsite every day, when he was, he spent the last three years reconstructing downtown Glen Ellen. So, if anybody's been in Glen Ellen recently and seen a lot of the work that's been done there, they, they kind of went to like the next level, and they would have like, you know, weekly Zoom meetings with business owners and things of that nature. So, I mean, it's just, it's really, we didn't scope that for this particular project, but there's any amount of level of, of public information and outreach. The difference between a, a project like the downtown Glen Ellen and this is, again, there's only so much the city and, and BLA, as the engineers can control because it's ultimately IDOT's road. So, they have the final say on, you know, okay, well, if the contractor wants to do this, which we didn't anticipate them doing maybe in two thousand and twenty-six, if IDOT says, yeah, this is what we want, then we kind of just have to go along with it because it is their facility.
Yeah. So, just to be clear, I, I believe the proposal has annual updates, and I was saying bi-annual updates.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't think we need to take a vote or anything, but it, you know, it just seemed like more information straight from the source. I don't know the same you could do, you know, Rich, maybe it's not cost-effective, but I just wanted to throw that out there. The more information about it.
I mean, if it's just showing up for, you know, a couple more times a year, that's not, I'm not going to charge you for that.
Okay.
We've been working on this for twenty years. We just, we want to see it as done as, as badly as anybody, so.
All right, great. Well, we may take you up on that.
All right, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I could, just one thing. I, I just, the corridor map, that I forgot who from the city council requested that, went live today on the city's construction webpage. So, there is a full-scale color diagram showing what the final product, not the current product, but the final product will look like.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, a voice vote is sufficient on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Item three E, consider draft resolution authorizing implementation of a Destination Geneva Grant Program. Okay, moved by Mark, seconded by Mayor, and Administrator Dawkins.
Okay, so, the Destination Geneva Grant Program is based upon several years of discussions with the city council on ways in which the city can support outside agencies within the ramparts of state statute, address concerns with the hotel operators' occupation taxpayers, i.e. the hotels, and provide accountability to those entities receiving taxpayer funds. The program aims to maintain and improve Geneva's destination appeal by providing reimbursement for festivals and special events that result in increased visits, overnight stays, and innovative experiences. These events should raise awareness, encourage economic development, and foster a sense of community. The proposed Destination Geneva Grant Program is a Geneva 2030 strategic plan initiative identified within the Purposeful Growth and Economic Vitality Strategic Goal. Fiscal year twenty-six budget included seventy-six thousand in funding for this purpose. The program, as contemplated, includes two funding categories. One, the Geneva Chamber Festival Support at fifty thousand dollars, and a special event support grant with a maximum grant of twenty-five hundred dollars per event. The program guidelines and application packet provides eligibility requirements, award structure, and program priorities, including eligible and ineligible expenses and reporting requirements. The overarching goal of the program is to meet the city's responsibility as it relates to the expenditure of funds collected under the hotel operators' occupation tax while meeting the need of very, need of various organizations within the community. As proposed, the program would be reviewed annually during the budget process to assess the program's effectiveness, determine if the program should continue, what action should be taken to improve the program, and approve the program's budget for the following fiscal year. The festival program was specifically designed to meet the needs of the Geneva Chamber of Commerce based upon multiple meetings, asking the chamber to provide a wish list. The wish list was reviewed through the lens of providing flexibility yet accountability, and the proposed grant program is a means to achieve those goals. The second part of the grant program, Special Event Support, is designed to grow and foster new endeavors, experiences, and reasons to visit Geneva by providing support to other organizations that propose events that will meet the goals of the grant program. Again, there's a whole lot of information in your packet, and with us this evening, we have Director Timoshenko to answer questions. I'm available for questions. The mayor's available for questions. And with that, I'll turn it back to older person Ruby.
Okay. Any questions on the dais? Kilburg?
There's a lot to digest here, and again, we got this on Thursday afternoon, and I think most of us probably had busy weekends. I, I'd like to have more time to study this, and I guess what I'm suggesting is, is that we table this, this item into the, the new year and bring it back, May nineteenth, I believe, we'll be meeting. And that'll give the, the new council an opportunity, since the new council is going to be involved with the implementation of this, this document. And I think it's only fair that since they're going to be accountable for it and are going to have to render decisions as it relates to it, I think it would be appropriate that they have an opportunity to study it. And again, the hour's late. I know that we still have some in the public that may like to speak tonight, and we're about twenty minutes roughly from ten o'clock. I guess I would move to, to table the Destination Geneva Grant Program into the new year and to bring it back on May nineteenth.
Just for clarification, can we use the term postpone rather than table so that it's?
Sure.
The appropriate?
Sure. My language sometimes is inappropriate, and I don't mind being corrected.
No, we, we've traditionally said to table things when table is not the, the appropriate mechanism.
Let's use table. I think that's a good word.
Postpone.
Postpone. Right. Okay. See, I was educated in Iowa, so I don't know how to help.
To May nineteenth. Okay. Do we need to vote on that, then? It's debatable, so. Okay. Any other, does anyone else want to discuss that, or can we vote on that?
I fully support that. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Bruno? Okay, Bruno?
Seems like we here have been more involved in this and have a broader understanding. It will evolve over time, I'd be anxious to move this ahead and vote tonight.
Similarly to Alderperson Bruno, this has been underway for a very long time, and I guess I feel like it would be nice for some of the outgoing members of council to have an opportunity to help launch this. I believe the grant program also envisioned that applicants would start submitting in June, and it seems like if we postpone, that does not give applicants a very long window to prepare applications, and at least for the grants to outside organizations other than the chamber. I believe it was to be on a rolling basis, I guess everyone would be at the same advantage or disadvantage, but it seems like it might be difficult to capture very much of the season the longer we delay. So I would prefer to get this started, thank you. And I guess I would note, it seems like there have been many, many discussions between the city and the chamber, and I guess I have confidence that city staff has crafted this with the request and information provided by the chamber, thank you.
I'm going to add two things. One, Mr. Olson implied that he had some, well, he didn't imply, he straight outside, he had some questions for Administrator Dawkins, he hasn't had a chance to talk to her about that yet, so I think if we postponed, it would, it would give them the time to have that conversation that he has requested. And also, as far as urgency, the city hasn't paid the chamber anything for 2024, so I don't, if we're still waiting on last year's money, let's get this right and make sure that the agreement is agreed upon by both parties.
And if I just make one clarification, we're not waiting on paying 2024, the agreement was terminated, so there are no monies due at this time. I'm just, I just want to make clear so that people don't think that there's money waiting, waiting from the previous agreement.
Was the chamber, so the chamber gets no funding from the city for 2024, and it's not forthcoming? It won't?
That is correct, the agreement was terminated in August of 2024.
Okay, so, okay, well, I guess that's another topic, but anyway.
Swanson?
Thank you, I appreciate Alderperson Bowring thinking of me as an outgoing Alderperson, however, it would not trouble me to postpone this too after I'm not here, not because I don't want to opine on it and see this done, but because there might be some open issues, and it is late, and as Alderperson Kilburg mentioned, we have not had a lot of time to discuss it. I have a multitude of questions, or specifics, or things that need to be clarified in my mind, that I would be perfectly happy to send to the two new Alder people that represent me, and I will share them so that those questions can be raised. So I fully support postponing this, thank you.
Okay.
I have another comment. This document has been in development for about 18 months, and the council has not had any opportunity to provide any input on anything as it relates to the document itself. I don't know, Mr. Alderman, it appears that some Aldermen have had an opportunity to preview this. And again, I don't know if somebody knows more about this document than I do, but I got this late afternoon on Thursday afternoon, and again, I had a lot of commitments over the weekend, and I'd like to have an opportunity to visit with the chamber to get a reaction to the document before we move it forward. I guess, what are the strengths of this document, because some people must know a lot about what it's all about?
I can assure you, Alderperson Kilburg, that the entire council received this document at the same time.
Okay, well, I know that, I believe there's been at least one or two Aldermen that have been involved in the negotiations, if I'm correct.
One Alderperson has, Alderperson Kassarok, which was included in the questions and answers that all of us received tonight.
That's right.
And he attended one of the meetings, that's correct.
Okay, so he's had, he's had more time to...
No, no, not in this document, though.
Okay, so, we're talking about a document that we've been working on for 18 months.
Four years.
Four years, okay, I didn't want to make it sound longer than it actually has been, but tonight, to move this forward without giving everyone an adequate time to review it, to develop questions, and then also interact with the chamber as far as their thoughts as it relates to it, I think would be inappropriate. So again, I'm saying we're not shuffling it, I'm just saying, can we give it a few weeks and come back to this at a table it and come back on May 19th? Is that the right word?
Postpone.
We know what you mean.
To postpone, sure.
Postpone, that's postponing.
Right, and I can offer one quick, specific example of a point that needs clarification. Under City Support Services, it's not defined if those are part of the $50,000 or not. There are a lot of questions like that.
I think, I'm not quite finished here. Excuse me.
Madam Chair, though, we are in violation of the amendment on the floor to postpone, we should be discussing only postponing, not bringing up issues cleverly and/or clandestinely. It's about postponing, the debate should be only on postponing.
Okay, and I was offering support of why it should be postponed.
Then I say we stick to the rules and we talk about only postponing.
Okay, okay, so can we vote on postponing it? Okay, so I will do a roll call vote on postponing the chamber agreement until May 19th, to give both parties time to discuss.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarok?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Aye.
So the motion carries, seven in the affirmative, three nays, so this item is postponed until May 19th.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a point of order, that vote was not about a chamber agreement, that vote was about the two grant programs that are proposed.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
I just want to make sure, just the one, we're even just talking the one.
The grant program, correct, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item 3F, consider draft resolution authorizing implementation of a Geneva Historic Preservation and Adaptive Reuse Grant Program. Still moving?
Second.
Moved by Bowring, seconded by Bruno and Administrator Dawkins, please.
Okay, so the Historic Preservation and Adaptive Reuse Grant Program is designed to provide funding to support the creation of new purposes for older structures while transmitting an understanding of the past to future generations. Projects will improve the economic vitality of the city by cultivating vibrant business corridors and enhancing the memorable character of Geneva. Aspiring to be a continuation of the ARPA Grant Program, this grant will be focused on elevating the built environment through exterior preservation and renovation projects, utility upgrades, ADA improvements, fire prevention measures, and interior improvements needed to support today's more intensive end users. Fiscal Year 26 budget includes $40,000 in funding for projects. Grants may be pursued independently or in conjunction with other types of incentives as applicable and/or relevant. And if you have questions regarding this program, Director Timoshenko is with us as well.
Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say, I've been, I'm very excited to see this type of grant program for downtown. It addresses some of the concerns that I've got from constituents and my own concerns about keeping our historic built infrastructure vital, so I'm excited to see this here, thanks.
Thank you, and Kassarok, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to motion that we put this also off to May 19th, so postpone a date definite. I just think the two can inform each other. This may be less sort of emotional and less dollar amount, but I do think the two programs were developed in conjunction with each other, although maybe they're completely separate in terms of funding. And so if there's sort of rule changes, or language changes, or things that we need to do, again, I think they could inform each other, and it's also a 10 to 10, so I don't know how good our discussion is going to be on the program this late at night. So I would motion that we also postpone this agenda item until May 19th.
Is there a second?
Oh, I didn't mean to say.
Marks, okay, seconded by Marks, and Mayor, something on the, on the...
On the motion, I mean, I read this, it's very straightforward, I think it's really clear, I think it's well-crafted, I don't see any reason to postpone it, I don't know if anybody didn't read it, but it's not as lengthy as the last one that we talked about, and really, there's no, there's no trick bags in it, it's a perfectly straightforward program that we could just vote aye and move it to city council, and if people have questions, they could get it answered at city council. Thank you.
Bowring?
I concur with Alderperson Mayor, I want to extend my appreciation to our staff for generating this grant program, I found it quite easy to digest, I am glad for this type of work to continue, and I think that the grant application and the reporting requirements were good, and really, as Alderperson Mayor said, it's pretty straightforward, so I would prefer to advance this to city council, thank you.
Ms. Dawkins, I have a question for you, the, can you please remind me, what's the funding source for this?
So this would come from the general fund, under the Economic Development Department's budget. I would also note that this is completely modeled after the ARPA grants that we've done numerous grants for, so it's essentially the same program, just different funding source.
Point of order, we should be debating the motion.
Sure.
And discussing that exclusively.
If we don't have a second to the motion, I would second the motion.
We got a second, yep.
Yeah, sorry, I was just trying to establish any relationship between the two programs to consider. All right, so are we ready to vote on extending, postponing this until May 19th? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Kassarok?
Aye.
Malaki?
Nay.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Nay.
Pashki?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
It's five-five.
Okay, now what?
You get that guy.
I have the opportunity to vote when there's a tie, I will vote nay, we'll discuss tonight.
So the amendment fails, back to the main motion.
Okay. Okay, Malaki?
I agree with Alderperson Mayor as well, I looked this over and I think it's pretty straightforward, the grant program. I voted to postpone the one with the Destination Program, just because I was a little bit more fuzzy on that one, not that it determined this one, but I think this is pretty straightforward, and I'd like to see it go forward this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, did you have a vote?
No.
Okay. Pashki?
I agree with the comments that have been made, this was very straightforward, it's a great thing to see before us after so much asking for it, and I really appreciate city staff's work on this, as well as the time that they took to answer questions during the day and on my drive home from work tonight, thank you.
Kilburg?
Maybe Kathleen could come forward and explain the, how did we arrive at the funding levels for this program? Because last November, I submitted numbers that were somewhat more than what had been incorporated into this program. Do you have a record of those?
I think it was part of the budget, wasn't it part of the budget discussions?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I don't know, it was part of the budget discussions, just, I think it was part of the amount that...
I believe Alderman Kilburg, you had proposed 10 at 250 or something?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty, what was, 2,500?
Forty-five hundred.
Yeah, and 10 projects. So the 40,000 was identified during the budget process, I don't know that Kathleen was thinking a specific number, because each project has different needs and different asks, so we put a dollar figure in there to start the program and see how it works, and either, if we need more funding, we would come back to council for a budget amendment, if that seems appropriate, then that's appropriate, but that's, that's how we, and I think you figured what, maybe like one project at 20,000, and then, then maybe a couple smaller projects.
Right, we're definitely looking to try to chase those projects that will have an impact on the economic vitality of the city, so trying to work with people who are proposing changes of use, or, you know, some preservation efforts that are going to sustain structures, not only for the physical well-being of the structure itself, but also the usefulness of the structure. Because part of our challenge with older buildings is to make sure that they are welcoming to today's types of uses, which are more intensive uses than we've seen, code-specific, more intensive code-specific uses than we've seen prior with the more passive uses that have been traditionally associated with some of the retail uses. Now we've got a lot of experiential retail, which, you know, have more assembly within, require more bathrooms, et cetera. We're hoping to see more code upgrades as far as fire prevention, alarms, and then, of course, attention to facade issues like dated windows, or cornices, or deterioration, and those types of things are going to require a little bit higher attention than the smaller amounts. I don't know if we'll be able to get as far, I think we could get further with a few projects at a higher threshold perhaps than several projects at smaller thresholds, and that's just also looking at what's on the horizon and what we know is needs to be done for some of the buildings, because we have a pretty good idea of our inventory and what's available and what's changing hands, so that is why the recommendation is as it is.
So what is the, what is the maximum expenditure as it relates to the program in any one year, at least in this first year?
Well, we have $40,000 budgeted, should we need more, we could come back and request a budget amendment, and then the city council could take a look at where we are with our funds and determine if more dollars could be allocated. I'll always be asking, so.
I guess my, my thought is that I would like to see it more aggressive. In my program that I proposed, support for existing businesses, a five-year program at $75,000 per year, broken out accordingly, 10 sign and awning grants of 2,500 each for restoration or updating of building signage, and then 10 facade grants of $5,000 each for restoration or updating of a building facade. And again, I, I think, I think, looking at costs today, I think we need to be more aggressive, if in fact we're going to offer a program that's going to have any meaning or, or is going to have any bite. Standalone programs, I'm saying, cannot be combined with TIF, sales tax rebates, or other financial benefits. The rules for TIF, sales tax rebates, or other financial benefits, a clean storefront with a sign or window identifying business and saying coming soon, giving or estimated date, such as, you know, summer of 2025, or fall of 2025, something to that effect. If, if, if it's a vacant land, a sign giving the same information. Recipients of funds are to provide the city with the timeline of the project and provide a construction schedule with their submittal, ongoing report on how grant or TIF money is being spent, show the math or business... Show the math or business projections at, application. Annually, show actual versus projection at six months, one year, and two years. And show quotes for repairs or upgrades paid for by taxpayers. Now, I know some of this is included probably in the, the grant program. But I'm, I'm proposing that we incorporate elements of what I proposed last November into the grant program that we, that we are discussing. So with that, I offer as an amendment to the grant program, my, my offering of these following points. And again, they were before the council since last November, so this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone.
I've been sitting here like since it started.
But if that's a motion...
Oh, motion, yeah, sorry.
So we need a... Is that a motion to amend? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
This was, the specific program here does not address signage. In fact, it excludes it. So Alder Person Kilburg is adding signage.
I'm just waiting.
Yeah, you're good.
Oh, okay. I don't know. I, I, I'm sorry, Dean, I didn't digest everything you read out loud. But I'm willing to consider it. And that's kind of my point of the earlier motion. I don't, we can't re-motion the same thing, I believe. But I'm willing to consider it. I just need some time. I need to look it over. I can't vote on that motion right now. Because, I know, I know.
I don't expect...
I, I'm more, I'm looking at you, but I'm more talking to everybody here, which is kind of my point. There are other aspects here that we need to reconsider and, or not reconsider, we need to consider. One of the things that...
It's 10 o'clock. Are we going to plan to continue?
Do we, we vote on that?
Did we get a second? Oh, we got...
No, I mean, do we need to vote on continuing past 10 o'clock?
Usually that's...
We're on the amendment right now. So I don't know how we're close. I, I have questions on the, the main amendment, so I, I think we ought to end it and postpone.
So our options are what exactly? If we end now, what happens? If we vote...
We end now.
Okay.
We can, I mean, first of all, typically that's brought to the tribunal as a whole. So you may want to see if people want to go over or under. And then if, if, if it's decided that they want to conclude things, someone may want to make a motion to push this over until May 19. If that's the next cop.
We can do that again?
Someone else can.
Okay.
There'll be a cow before then.
So there will be a cow on May 5th, but we're trying to keep May 5th light. So it's ceremonial in nature, rather than a 10 o'clock meeting on the first night that our new elected officials are sworn into office.
But they're getting used to it right now, so.
Bruno?
Thank you. I, I'm perfectly happy with what's here. There's no reason at a future date that we can't enhance the program. So I'm perfectly fine, A, moving forward and finishing up tonight, because I think...
Well, as a reminder, the first thing is, is kind of the standing rule the council has at 10 o'clock about concluding the meeting. And then typically what happens is, chair defers to the majority of the council to determine if they wish to continue or to not continue.
Okay. So I was just trying to establish if we, if we choose to end the meeting, what happens if we, if we end mid item? What, what happens to that agenda item? If we decide to end the meeting now?
I'm going to defer to the mayor, because it's never actually happened in my tenure.
Nor has it in mine. But I, I would concur that if we choose to adjourn this meeting now, this matter would be brought up where it was left off at the next postponed date of the committee of the whole, which appears to be the 19th.
Not the 5th? Not the 5th?
As the city administrator just said, the 5th is intended to be a ceremonial meeting for, meeting for the new council and not a hard-grinding meeting, but...
We, we are... We are planning to have a special committee of the whole on May 14th for the solar presentation. So if we wanted to combine this with that, we could do that. It's, no, that's, I mean, the 12th, I'm sorry, May 12th.
Sorry, is your question answered?
Yeah, so we need to vote on whether or not we're going to continue the meeting.
I would like to continue the meeting. Like, keep talking about it now.
Okay, let's just do, can I just do a show of hands, or do we need to do a roll call? Okay, so if you would like to continue the meeting? One, two, three, four, five. Mayor gets a vote on this one?
Break a tie.
Um, oh, six. Okay, I think that does it. Let's just double check. People who want to end now, we've got four. And I would vote to end now. That would be five. So we're tied.
Yeah, I would vote to continue.
So let's, let's flip a coin.
I need to break the tie and vote to continue.
Okay. All right, so we are on the amendment that Dean proposed. Malaki?
I guess I'm not in favor of the amendment. I'm looking at this, the original proposal as it is, as it's, it's a limited amount. Kathleen mentioned that we can go back to the table and, and ask for more and revise it down the road. To me, I'm looking at it as more of a pilot program, where we could add certain things that may not fit or weren't asked for at a later date. I, I'm happy with, you know, getting it off the ground.
Mayor?
What I see in the, in the program that's been, that's on, up for vote right now is a program that's very similar to all of the ARPA grants that we've reviewed and approved.
We still on the amendment?
Yes.
The motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm talking about why I think the amendment's not necessary. Because I think that what we're going to get is quality estimates of work that needs to be done on buildings, not hypothetical work. I don't think signage qualifies as something that we want to pay for, because it's a temporary and it's related to the business use, not to the building. So I read through the whole thing. I think that it's a good program that could just move forward right now and we could vote. So I hope we can just do that and move on.
Bowring?
Can I call a question on the amendment?
It's two-thirds vote, for sure.
Okay, so we'll call?
Every time.
Need a second?
Oh.
Second. Just like every other time. That's available?
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Wait, wait, what was the...
Call the question.
We're calling the question.
Okay, just, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kasarag?
Nay.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
So now we vote on the amendment?
I have a question about...
No.
Okay, so we're voting on the, so the...
The, the questions were called.
Amendment was voted down.
We are now voting on the amendment.
Oh, on the amendment.
Oh, six-four, you're right.
Right, so we're still discussing the amendment. Correct.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Okay, so more discussion on the amendment. Have at it. Bruno?
I concur with Alder Person Mayor. There's good content in here. There, what I heard, I, I'm not comfortable voting on now, particularly with signage. But I don't see why that can't be discussed, so I would not be supporting the amendment.
Kilburg?
Yeah, I proposed that in November. I was not contacted once as it relates to the development of this document, as it relates to my ideas that were shared in November. So if this is really committee of the whole, this isn't committee of the whole. I mean, I, I gave, I gave a written proposal to staff, and now we got a finished document and my ideas were never touched. So I don't know why I'm here tonight, because apparently everybody's in agreement that staff should develop this. I don't know why we should even vote on it. Because if it's a perfect document, that's great. I hope it's successful. But the thing is, is for a member of this council to offer ideas, and no one reaches out to me to incorporate one idea that I might have struck on with a proposal I presented, I think it's disappointing. So that's why I'm a little frustrated tonight. And I think you would be too, if you had an idea that you brought forward and you never were offered the opportunity to provide any input into the development of a document of this type that really touched on a lot of the same things that I was entertaining. So again, if I'm a little upset tonight, maybe I am. But again, I, I would hope my voice would carry a little weight as it relates to developing ideas and proposals that are brought forth, forth of the committee of the whole. I mean, committee of the whole is, it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a, a misstatement.
If I may though, there was a draft of this program in, in the November 6th, I believe it was, 2024, in October, was it? That we did not get to that evening, and it was postponed. So, and not postponed, it just wasn't considered. And I would also note that I believe that there are some elements, but staff has to take direction from a consensus of the body and not one individual. So what Kathleen, what Kathleen presented is what she believes the businesses were asking for. And so that's what we presented tonight. This council may amend it however they deem appropriate. That's purely, that's your prerogative. It's your program. We're just providing a recommendation. And the other thing I would note is that, one of your questions that you asked earlier that I don't think got answered is, this program does not specify a maximum grant award. Because it's on a case-by-case basis, depending upon the project that is brought forward and the investments that are being made.
Pashke?
Oh, Bowring, sorry. I don't support this amendment, because I'm comfortable with the program that has been proposed by staff. I specifically like the flexibility in what has been proposed. I think, as Alder Person Mayor pointed out, it resembles pretty closely a lot of the ARPA grants that we have already done. And I'm not as interested in a very prescriptive grant program that presumes that we know all of the needs that a business might have. In addition, you know, we can consider other additions down the line. But respectfully, the committee of the whole is the committee of the whole. And I think this is our opportunity to start talking about it. We get to talk about it again at city council if it advances. And I think it is a great program and we should advance it. Thank you.
Pashke?
I don't support the amendment. I think the program as it is is a great start. I think staff has, has stated that this is a pilot, this is a, a start, and there will be potential for changes in the future. I think if a council member wanted to make a singular recommendation for a change, that would be appropriate. That's our place as policymakers. Our place is not to completely create programs and prescribe them to city staff whose job is to create the programs. So I find it a bit offensive to our city staff, who did the work of creating this program, to say that they should take one of our suggestions for the entire program. I'd be open to considering a singular amendment to a policy aspect of the program, but I disagree with the amendment.
Any other comments? Kasarag?
Surprise, surprise, tonight I'm talking. I mean, I can't support the amendment, because I don't even know what I'm voting on. You know, like, I didn't get all the information. But since this is committee of the whole, and we do have another discussion coming up, I encourage you, I believe the proper way would be to send it to Stephanie, and then Stephanie can distribute it to all of us. Is that correct? So we could discuss them later, Dean. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All right. On the amendment. Okay, we're voting on the amendment right now. Let's just do a roll call. Actually, I'm sorry. No, I meant a voice vote. Can I do a voice vote? Oh, do you have to do a roll? Okay. Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Nay.
Malaki?
Nay.
Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Pashke?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment fails. So now we are back to the main motion. Yes, Dean?
I'd offer an amendment to increase the funding on an annual basis to $75,000 and build that into the program that is in front of us this evening.
Okay, is there a second on...
I'll take the suggestion of a fellow, or one of my cohorts.
Is there a second on...
The funding increase.
The funding increase amendment?
Second.
Oh, no. Okay, here we go again. Mayor?
The, the system that's in the, in the program currently, that's before us, is that the potential grantees fill out the application, and the application is reviewed for the criteria put forward within the grant program, which, one is the appropriateness and the allowability of the changes. And then there's also if it meets the strategic plan goals. These come forward to us to review then, is my understanding of the program, if they meet, if they get two points. So we will see all of these and vote on them, and then thereby set the budget. The idea that there, as Administrator Dawkins said, there is no cap right now in this program. Therefore, the idea of putting a budget allocation on it doesn't make sense to me. I think that we should vote on the program that's been set forward. If you continue to have questions, it'll be voted on at city council. So it, it really does seem like a great program to me. I, I think that it meets the needs of the buildings in the town that form the places that people do business. And that is what we as council are supposed to do, not back businesses, not pay for signs. All, all of the things that are laid out very clearly in the program are ideal, in my mind, for the community. Thank you.
Swanson?
Point, point of order, is there a point system with this program? Or was that a different program that we were looking at? I don't recall a point system.
Yeah, the point system's with the other program.
Okay, I didn't see one.
But they would be reviewed for, to make sure they're meeting the goals of the strategic plan and similarly to how we've done in the past.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and Bruno?
Thank you. It seems like the initial dollar that is put on here is somewhat arbitrary. We will see these things come through if we're making great inroads. Given my history with the city, I would love to see money invested downtown. This $40,000 that's outlined here doesn't really cap it. If, if we're having great success, we'll up that, because that'll become, coming before city council. So I wouldn't support the amendment.
And if I just make one comment, if it's a budget amendment, so we would be amending the budget to take it, because currently there's 40,000 budgeted. If it's a budget amendment to take that to 75, that requires a two-thirds majority vote of the council.
Any other questions or comments? Pashke?
This might be a little bit repetitive, but I, I think my understanding of the program is that we're going to be assessing these, and if it looks like we need more the next year, we will have the ability to budget more the next year, or even do a budget amendment during the year. So I don't see a reason to pass this current amendment.
Any other...
I got a question, a comment. I think, I think anyone that's had any work done recently, I don't think 40,000... I think, I think anyone that's had any work done recently, I don't think $40,000 goes very far. And I think to create interest in the business district as it relates to the program, I think you have to have a figure large enough to create some excitement. And again, I think, how many applications are going to consume $40,000? A couple? And again, maybe they'll be easier to manage, but I think if we really want to have an impact and we want to really indicate that the council's there and is prepared to support aggressively a ambitious rework of some of the businesses in the downtown that really need a facelift coming out of COVID, I think we need to put a number out aggressively enough to spark interest in $40,000. If I was looking at, if I was one of the business people and I had a project, you know, how many projects are going to be accomplished as a result of this program? Maybe a couple a year, two or three a year. And I think we need more than just two or three projects to really have an impact. And we need continuity, I think, where we need to make a commitment for a more extended period of time. So this goes for at least a couple of years, maybe three years. So, again, those are the reasons why I'm bringing this forward at this time. And, again, it's all food for thought and maybe Kathleen, it looks like, has a comment on it.
If I may. The reason that I was comfortable with the amount that was provided for in the budget is because, you know, these projects, we work them. We, you know, work with potential end users and owners to try to make these projects. And they take a while. When we were provided the ARPA grant funds, if you remember, we were working with people for a long time and then we had to try to nail them all down, like, at the end. It is hard, you know, you're pushing people toward projects and you're trying to leverage the public investment with private investment. So we're looking to try to bring forward, you know, larger investments by coupling it with the city dollars. And we aren't seeing these as high percentage grants. We're seeing them as, like, the gap financing to help move it forward. So I was comfortable thinking that, you know, if we were able to move two more bigger projects at 20,000 or one large project at 40, that we would be okay with these amount of money. If there's something exciting potentially that we could propose, we will not say, oh, there's no funds. We always try to find a way to close gaps, especially when there's an exciting end user. We're really trying to pay attention to the economic vitality of our business district. So this is what I do all day long. I talk to brokers, potential tenants, people coming in. I kind of know what's cooking and what the buildings are that have problems and what the buildings are that need help. I mean, this is, you know, what I try to do most of the day. So, you know, I feel that we could move forward as proposed with the amounts and I feel comfortable with being able to come forward and say, okay, we have this great project, the gap is X amount, we ran out of funds, would you consider this budget amendment? So it won't preclude us from doing that. So that's what I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Kasarag?
On the amendment, I'm kind of with Dean. And I think about the headline, you know, Geneva agrees to invest $40,000 or Geneva agrees to put $75,000 into upgrading its downtown. However, whoever might write the headline or the article, and I don't know, I actually kind of uncomfortable with what you just said, Kathleen, that, like, we'd have a project and then we'd make a budget amendment specifically for one business and one person because we want to fund them more than is allocated?
I mean, I think what we do with any incentive is we look at the big picture of the project. We look at the amount of the investment, whether there's property acquisition, what the improvements are, what the build-out costs are, and we identify a gap. And so then we would lean on this program to be the funding mechanism for that gap. If there was more that we thought was needed to be able to achieve the development, we would bring that forward and explain that need. And then if that required a budget amendment, that would be requested so that the funds would be there to meet the need. So we're definitely looking at projects based on the need for that specific project. So yes, I mean, I don't think it's...
Well, I guess I'm getting lost with what you're explaining on what the whole program is about. I mean, we've already done economic incentives without this program multiple times over, right?
Well, not, I mean, we've done forms of this in other projects. When we had things that were going on prior to the ARPA funds, we had provided grant dollars in different formats to projects. And this is just trying to formalize a program which is, you know, helps us be more competitive, helps it be more clear to potential recipients. So I don't think it's that far astray from what we've done prior.
Well, the way you're describing it, I guess, is first reaction, I mean, with all due respect, but it sort of seems repetitive. If we can already do economic incentive agreements, what's the point of the program?
I think the point of the program is to be proactive and to have something defined and available so that it's not, so that it's more clear to people and it helps us to be more competitive. And I just think that it shows that the city of Geneva is, you know, organized and has this criteria. It helps to explain what the applicants need to do more clearly in order to gain those funds. So I think it's just, it's just a better way to...
I don't disagree with you on that at all. I mean, I think it's important to announce this. I, I don't know. Again, we're on the amendment right now. So I guess to clarify one thing I believe that was said in regards to this and not needing to raise it to 75,000, is that we'll see all the applications. We will, the council will see every application and we will consider them.
No, so let me, if I may clarify the funding question. The program doesn't talk about the funding amount. The program is the program. The funding amount is a budget question. So if you want to amend the budget, that's a different, technically a different topic. That's to amend the budget requires a two-thirds vote. Tonight, this is the program. What we have told you is that for this next fiscal year, in the budget, there's $40,000 allotted for the program. The program, no, will first go through a screening through economic development to ensure that it meets all the criterias, that they've done all the things and that it meets the standards, then those are the ones that would be brought forward to council. Not everyone that is submitted will be brought to council because not everyone that is submitted meets all the requirements.
Okay. Well, I have a process question then, but I think that's back to the main program. So...
So the, on the floor, though, is the amendment to raise it to 75, but that's not really what's on the table tonight. It's just the program. We were sharing with you what is budgeted for fiscal year to do this program.
I think, maybe, I think I have...
Question for your attorney.
Can I ask a point of order then? Is that, is the amendment germane to this issue or not?
I think it's germane. It ultimately is a budgetary item and it's, basically, it's a budget amendment.
So the amendment has to pass by a two-thirds vote?
Yeah, it would be.
Okay.
Am I back? I was just going to say, it sounds like the appropriate way to probably handle this is to loop back around on how much we want to budget it at a later time. So let's get the program down, let's get the rules down. I think, I agree with Alderman Kilburg, there could be more money, I think, invested in this program. I agree with that. But in terms of the amendment, I think that's probably more appropriately happen as a budget amendment, as a separate discussion item, maybe as soon as a couple weeks after we pass this. Not complicated, again, going back to earlier.
One second. Did you have a...
What he said, come back for a budget issue, let's vote on the program, talk about the budget at a future date.
Okay.
Well, you have to vote on the amendment first.
Sure. And Kilburg?
No, I was just curious. It appears that we have businesses that are ready to go, that are prepared to move forward. I guess my question would be is, do we have two or three viable candidates at the present time that probably would be all over this program? We're on the amendment. We're on your amendment. Well, that might have a bearing on what the expenditure might be. And if there's, if there's a lot of, a lot of community interest and anticipated community interest, because there's been discussions around projects of this nature and city support, then it might have merit to come back and then, and try to address the budget piece, which seems to be what you're saying.
We have a building on State Street that wanted to go for the ARPA funds and they didn't have enough time due to other issues that they had. So they're a potential project that would come through. We have another building under contract that has a gap in their financing that I think this project, this program would be very good for if that project moves forward. We have another project that we're talking about, another State Street project that potentially could go through this program. So there's a few percolating. Whether they finalize applications will remain to be seen, but yes, there's projects.
So this would be apart from a new business coming into the community where the council in the past has committed sizable resources to the launch of those businesses. So this would be apart from it. It would be an existing business that wants to make these improvements. So you're not saying that if we had a new business come to town and that we, you had a request on the part of your department to help fund the differential that they need to launch that business, that would be apart from this?
Well, what I always say is that we're never investing into a business. We're always investing into the built environment, and I've said that consistently. So sometimes it is a new business that triggers that investment. So whether it's a new business that's coming in and is trying to ready that space for the use and the intensities that they're proposing and they need certain changes, those changes stay with the building.
Right.
And we're not necessarily investing in, you know, this restaurant or this type of shop. We're saying, you're making these improvements that will stay with the building, whether we look at the ADA, the code enforced, the code upgrades. Sorry, I've been here 15 hours, I think, today. So we're looking at those type of things. So we're never just investing in a business. It could be an existing tenant who is proposing improvements to a building that, you know, they just aren't able to really ever come up with the funds to get new windows, like, yeah, American Legion, for instance. They're not a business necessarily, but they are running a rentable space and it's hard to come up with those costs to invest in property. So it could be an existing owner. It could be an existing owner with, in collaboration with the business. It could be a new business coming in that is triggering upgrades and needing upgrades. So it's usually, I don't think I've ever proposed just helping a business that wasn't impacting a structural built environment issue. And it could be utility-related. We have existing businesses that have issues with the electric service. They need electric upgrades or water upgrades, and that's something that we would love to see them do, but they have not been able to find the funds. Similarly, fire code upgrades. So in those cases, it would be to an existing business. So that's, that's kind of the approach that we've taken, that we're trying to make sure that our built environment is readied and capable of supporting the uses now, today, and tomorrow.
What I'm saying, I guess what I would say then, though, is an electrical upgrade doesn't really give us the facelift on State Street that we're looking for. And I would like to see these dollars directed toward a facelift and not an electrical upgrade that nobody's aware of that drives by. Isn't that, did I misunderstand you?
Okay. Okay. So back to the amendment, I'm going to offer, I sense people are ready to move forward on the original agenda item, but not the budget amendment. So... Would you like, would you like to vote on it or, okay?
I'm ready.
Okay, all right, so let's vote on the amendment and it has to be roll call.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Ne.
Maliki?
Ne.
Marks?
Ne.
Mayor?
Ne.
Pashke?
Ne.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Ne.
Bruno?
Ne.
Ruby?
Aye.
Okay, so we're back to the original, the main motion. And can we vote? Are we ready to vote on it?
No, I have questions.
I have questions.
I voted tableless for another day, so I'm not going to be, I'm not going to save my questions for later, so...
All right, Swanson, do you have a question or a comment? Go for it. Floor is yours.
I'll start out. This one's for you, Kathleen. You mentioned the American Legion. Are they tax exempt? And if they are, they...
I don't know if they are. I mean, they...
They would not qualify under this program.
I think, I think the reason we did that was because, yeah, we were looking for property tax generators to be reinvesting, so they wouldn't be, they wouldn't qualify unless the city council wanted to make an exception.
And I guess my question there would be, why are we making that distinction? Because to me, a building is a building. We invest in the building, not in the business. And we have not-for-profits and tax-exempt entities that own multiple properties in the historic district that need assistance too and are part of the downtown. So my question there is, why do we exclude them, particularly for something like a firewall that we're going to put in that's going to protect the entire downtown, whether or not it's a property taxpaying business or a non-taxable entity? Doesn't matter. A fire's a fire. So I think that could be hashed out. That could be a policy discussion. Right now, we're excluding a good portion of the downtown. Moving on with other eligible projects, we put in there age 30 years or older. Where did that number come from?
That came from preservation.
Who's preservation?
Our preservation department.
The HPC?
No, not the HPC. Our...
Oh, the preservation planner?
Yeah. Preservation planner, community development director, yeah.
Okay. And then we have an eligible projects of a style that embodies a distinctive architectural era.
Yes.
So I'm thinking, well, 30 years ago was 1995. What was distinctive of that era? Or how would that apply? So that's very subjective. What does that mean? I don't know. You tell me. Some are going to qualify or who's deciding? It was mentioned earlier, I think you mentioned... It was mentioned earlier, I think you mentioned it, Stephanie, that the economic development department would be culling these applications and then approving some to come to the city council. Is there any HPC involvement?
It would be case by case. I think what we're trying to do is, we're economic development.
Understood.
So we're coming from this, this isn't a program that's an HPC-driven, it's economic development driven. So we're trying to use this program to meet our economic development goals. And that's why we didn't include non-for-profits. It's not a program to just do upgrades to building. It's a program to address the built environment and our economic vitality of the downtown. So we're trying to leverage the program to bring forward the types of end-users that will create the economic vitality downtown. If you wanted to have a program that was strictly preservation and it was completely leaned that way, we could write a program that way, but that's not what we're writing it for.
And under the statute, the reason we can provide money is under economic development and vitality.
Okay, but isn't our historic downtown part of what creates the environment for our economic vitality?
Again, we're just preventing, we're presenting the recommendations from staff. You all can provide your comment and make recommended amendments that, I think she gave you the information of where she was coming from when the program was created.
Understood. I think it's excluding a good chunk of our-
And the dollars come from the general fund, which are, which, one of the major resources is property tax and sales tax. So I think those are considerations. If you're talking about budget and where the dollars are coming from, you would think there should be some symbiotic relationship between that.
I understand that. One of Kathleen's points, though, is that we're making these buildings compatible for future uses as well. So if a non-taxable entity has a building that they want to upgrade, they're making it useful for the future. So there are tie-ins. It's muddy. It's gray. It's not black and white. That's my point. I wanted to move into program revisions and annual program review. I love that you have that. We don't do much looking back in this body, so I think that's great. However, it's not real specific. It says that the program will be reviewed during the city's annual budget process. So my question would be, by whom? Who is going to be doing that? And who is going to, who is it going to be communicated to? When you say it's in the budget process, is that your department? And then would you be making a presentation to the city council? I think that should be spelled out. If there's an annual sunset clause or that we're going to evaluate killing the program, that should be specific. So my question there is, I'm assuming you would be the person, or your department would be evaluating it. Again, how is it going to be communicated? I don't know.
I mean, we can sit here and answer each individual question, or we can take that under advisement so that we can come back to you with, but the budget process, the departments create their budget, they present it to the city administrator based on the priority set at strategic planning, and then we present that to the council. And we would say, here's what we did this year in this program. Here's what we think worked. Here's what we think didn't work. Again, as a newly implemented program, some of these things are going to be fettered out as we do them. We won't know what it looks like necessarily until we actually have a program to report on and tell you what happened.
I understand that. And I would have the same question for the program that got postponed to May 19th. So I do think there was a tie-in to evaluating both of these programs simultaneously. I also don't understand the urgency to complete this tonight.
I would only say that this one got put on hold back from last October.
They both did.
They both did, correct. And we were kind of just waiting, but Kathleen, as she just indicated, she has some businesses and some people that are looking at properties that this may be a benefit to.
I understand. Ayew, thank you.
Husarag?
I'm going to say, kind of earlier, I think it was on the amendment, but the way you've described this makes me feel like I didn't understand what it was in the first place. I thought it was more like what Dean was referring to. I want to do a project. I haven't been able to afford it. I want to paint my columns. I want to replace my columns. I want to do whatever. Hearing that it's, the funds are just going to be used in economic incentive agreements, possibly, I know that's not a for sure, isn't that taking away money from other people that might want to do stuff? And so like, let's just say Mr. Olson wants to, needs to do some tuck working on the exterior of his building, but fancy new restaurant comes into town, says I need an economic incentive agreement of probably more than $40,000. Well, we give you 40 from the program, and then we'll come up with this. I feel like we haven't really accomplished what I thought it was, which was, like Dean said, to clean up, not clean up, but to improve on the facades of State Street and Historic District. So I'm just kind of confused what the grant program is for. And maybe in a discussion in the future, or as you guys consider this before city council, I don't know. The intention to me isn't clear. Is this for small repairs or smaller repairs to buildings? Or is this for big deal, new economic drivers that are coming into the city? I guess, I thought it was the former. I thought it was helping current or new business owners come in and have a funding mechanism to do small projects that are to the benefit of everybody in the community.
I mean, it's not a property maintenance program, so it's not supposed to be a substitution for property maintenance. It is trying to be something bigger than that. It is trying to be an economic development tool that we can work to bring forward positive improvements and changes. You know, I don't think that we were looking to introduce a program that would just be a building maintenance type program.
Well, I don't really mean building maintenance. To me, that's, well, I guess I did then, if that's what you're thinking. But like, when I think of building maintenance, it's, I don't know, simpler stuff than that. I think the facades are really what gives our whole unique third in State Street, and I thought that's kind of where this was going. I also thought that it was aimed at going, what?
It's number one on this, the allowable expenses.
Okay.
Facade rehabilitation.
Okay. I have the floor, if it's okay, Amy. And I guess I'm not comfortable with, I'm saying that too strong. I do like the program. I'm really, it's late. This is why I don't want to talk at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. But I guess I thought they were going to be going to a variety of businesses.
I don't think that's wrong. I think that's, just like the ARPA funds did.
Well, we had millions of dollars of ARPA funds. We have $40,000 here.
We had $500,000.
Okay, well, more than 10 times the amount.
We definitely had, and that was over, what, three years, I think? So we had, we had a variety of projects there, too, based on, situationally based, on what the situation was with that building, what we were trying to cure. What's the issue with this building? What are we trying to cure with this? Is it, you know, neglect to the facade? Is it that nobody can go in here because there's no, there needs to be ADA access, or there needs to be fire separations? We're trying to cure the issue at hand. So it could be for this building, a facade. For this building, a more serious issue. So I think, you know, I think that the grant program was written in a way to give us that flexibility to work with owners, to try to figure out what is the problem, what is in the way, is the obstacle for this building to be actively reused. And the grant has several categories and several areas that can be plucked and worked with to get to the end goal. Because the end goal is to have it fully occupied, active, contributing property. And so that, I think that's what is proposed. So it could be for one person, that they're a business that has been there for 40 years, and they just need some assistance with the facade. And that could be a positive program that would meet the criteria. For the next person, it could be that it's a vacant space and that it needs X, Y, and Z. And so then that would be what would be structured. So it could, it could be both.
I, okay, I'll just, I'll stop laboring that point, but I think, for me, that issue, that we're in a gray area there between economic incentive agreements and this program. And I don't know, there's something about just grabbing money out of this program for an economic incentive agreement. Is that how it would kind of work? We're going to take $10,000 out of the grant program and put it towards our $100,000 incentive agreement? Is that-
Potentially.
Then it's not a grant. You're not writing a grant. We're just taking the funding away from the program, right? Or am I confusing how the process would be? Right now, everybody's angry in the room, I can tell. I'm not liking it, but I don't care. I'm going to keep going. An economic incentive agreement comes to us now in the form of an agenda item. And it's all spelled out very clearly in a contract with the person. A grant program, you write a grant for a specific thing, and if you meet all the qualifications and there's funding available, generally speaking, you'll probably get it, right? So if we're just taking $10,000 out of the program, or are you helping them write a whole grant?
There's an agreement that they would have to enter into that's in your packet.
I saw that.
Okay, so that, it's no different than what we've been doing. We have done for various, we've given like a grant for part of what they needed, and then we did a sales tax rebate.
But that's a grant, like, out of the blue.
So it's an economic incentive program, but in that economic incentive, there were components. And one component was a grant, and one component was a sales tax rebate. Or maybe it was a waiver of connection fees.
But this gets back to that process question. I said, are we going to see all the grants? And you said the ones that qualify are going to come through.
You're going to have to, whatever, any ones that are going to be recommended for getting payment have to come before the city council.
Okay. I just don't understand the funding mechanism is here. You have to write a grant to get this money, or we could just give it to you as part of a new business.
I think what Kathleen was trying to do is formalize a program so that when we are, when she is talking to prospective, either new businesses or existing businesses or whatever, we know what our economic tools are in our toolbox. Right now, we don't necessarily have this tool in our toolbox.
But see, that's exactly what I'm saying. I feel like we do.
No, we did.
And that's where I'm confused.
Or a sales tax.
Yes.
Okay, I have the floor and I'm talking. I don't really want explanations from the council.
So we have, we do have, so we had it with ARPA. ARPA is done. So now all we have are sales tax rebates, or TIF agreements, or what else, Kathleen?
Right, in the downtown.
And in the downtown, we have nothing.
In the downtown, we have sales tax rebates.
But we fund them all the time. I'm, why, am I, I don't understand.
With ARPA, probably.
Yeah, with ARPA.
But you just said we gave them grants, ARPA grants.
Right. ARPA money is gone.
I get that.
We can no longer do that. So we are trying to create a program that was similar to what we had under ARPA.
So without this program, we could not give them any money from the general fund?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Well, there, that's all I was looking for.
It's fine.
That's it. I didn't understand the difference from before until now. So that was an easy explanation.
Sorry, because-
Yeah. I, okay. And then another question I had was, I thought I read, but I'm just going to ask for clarification because it's late, that grant applicants who don't get funding are still, but eligible, are left on the list. Didn't I see that in there?
We did have that written, that if there was not funding available, that they could have funding, try to have funding for the next time that the funds were available, which is kind of what we have now. We have people that didn't get the ARPA in time for ARPA, but-
I guess there, my question, or my thought pattern was more like, we give $40,000 away to one, one great program, you know, that we love. The next person's got a great program at $30,000. The next person is at 20. And then a year from now, Little Owl wants to open and needs all the money times 10 to do the Little Owl. And so all these programs are in line, so essentially, we can't do the Little Owl, is what I'm hearing based on that, because they're in line.
I mean, that would be your decision. You'll still hear it from me. You'll hear it from us, that the programs are there and you can make those decisions. We're not going to, you know, say, oh, you can't, you can't talk to us because the funds are over. We'll-
Well, that's not what I was saying. We can't talk.
We'll definitely-
I was worried about the funds being encumbered. I mean, we could at least, we could easily, if it's $40,000, couldn't, we could, people could submit $4 million worth, several people, and then now our funds are encumbered for years, right? I'm just trying to talk about that provision. Am I wrong about that?
I think, I don't think wrong is the answer. I think you're oversimplifying or you're co-mingling. I'm not, I'm not sure which. So this is giving us the framework, right? And I think we're getting hung up on the dollar part. Because Kathleen's going to review, if people apply under this grant program, there's no dollar amount within the grant program itself. So she's going to do what she's always done. She is going to review what their ask is. She's going to say, okay, I need this information, I need this information. No, this isn't, this isn't eligible or isn't appropriate. And she's going to, she's going to do all of that analysis. And if, if all of that analysis meets this program, then she would recommend it for funding to this council. If we have funding. Now, the funding is not just because it's been budgeted. The funding is actually, do we have the funds, right? Have we gotten the revenue? Do we have the revenue to cover this grant? So I think you're getting hung up on, somebody comes in with a $4 million project, but we'd already given away 40,000. Each project will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis to see if it meets the criteria. And if it meets that, and we think it's a worthwhile recommendation, it would come to this body to determine that. And we would provide you the information, hey, here's our budget this year. Either we have funding available or we don't. And if you want to fund this, we need to do a budget amendment. And to do a budget amendment, it means that maybe we can't do X over here. Or maybe we have funds in our reserve that we can do a budget amendment and use fund reserves for this because we feel it's that important.
I guess I was feeling more from the perspective of a business owner. If somebody just got $4 million, I guess I might as well, that blew the budget for the next couple of years, I might as well just tap out.
But that's, but that's, the budget, there's no-
But if we did 20, I guess, the smaller ones make sense to me.
I think the more common sentiment is, hey, they got money, how about me? Can I get some money?
But you still have to meet the qualifications.
Right. I don't know if it would be a deterrent. I think that the more funding you give, the more that it is looked at, like, is there a possibility that I can get this? It's kind of more of a-
Which gets back to the budget question, like Dean proposed. So I'm just saying I have questions along these lines. I'm not sure I'm clear on them right now. I still have two weeks to ask all the questions I want, so maybe we can follow up with a meeting at a more reasonable hour.
And in speaking about timing, one thing that's important, too, is that, you know, it's, we're heading into construction season, so it would be nice to have something, even if it isn't, you know, completely whatever, it can still be amended, even though, even if it isn't viewed as perfect. I think that you can still make additions, but it would be nice just to have something. I know it's something that is desired. I know community development is interested in trying to promote it also with respect to preservation. So I know that we are all anxious to try to, you know, get something out to the community, so.
I'm interested. Thanks for your feedback.
Does this take a simple majority?
Wait, I got a question, I had my.
So, um, okay.
To move it on? Yes.
Yeah, to, to advance it to city council with probably not onto the consent agenda, we need a majority.
Oh, no, this is, this is, right.
Right. If it's not unanimous, it does not go on consent.
Right, so I'm just appealing to my colleagues here that we vote, because I think that the vote is going to move it to city council, and questions can be answered then. Dean, go ahead.
Kilburg?
Kathleen, I think what I'm really concerned about is exterior. And I guess if you had two proposals that came in, and one was lighting, which is, it says it's an allow-up expense, and you had one that was gonna do some rewiring in the kitchen, which of those two would be, take priority?
Um, it would be depending on the other circumstances related to the project, so.
Well, nobody sees the wiring in the kitchen, but the exterior is what I'm targeting, and I think that's where you get the facelift. It's not heart surgery, it's a facelift. There's a, there's a difference.
I think that if there were two projects that were different, but both significant for the property, I would bring them both forward, and if they both met the criteria, I would bring them both forward, going back to what city administrator Dawkins was talking about, I would say, I, I, I think both of these are worthwhile projects that would have these types of impacts. This would re- require a budget amendment to have both of these done, and then the city council could decide. You could decide whether one had more merit, if you did, if you weren't able to do the budget amendment, or you weren't able to move money around, then it would be the decision of this board to determine which one.
Dean, you still have the floor, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. All right, and, yeah. Are we ready to vote? Okay.
You might wanna roll call this one.
Yeah, let's do a roll call vote, and again, just.
Could we just have this not on the consent agenda, no matter? It's not gonna be on the consent agenda. Well, I'm not sure if it, I mean.
And it'll be on the twenty-eighth of April.
Right, it'll be, it'll be next week.
Yeah.
Right, and now I'm just saying is, we can all vote yes if we wanna move it forward, if it's not on the consent agenda, then that's what I'm asking. We'll get a roll call this vote right now. Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna vote no for it, just because I want it on the, I want it off the consent, and that's, that's all I'm asking, is if we could do that. Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote? Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasrak?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
If I just make, may make a request, if you do have specific questions, if you can submit them to us in advance, then at least we can be prepared to have a fruitful conversation.
All right, public comment. Anyone like to tell us how sore they are from sitting for three hours, or four hours, in the wooden chairs? New business and adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
I think that was unanimous.